Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning Commission for November 8th. I'd like to call this meeting to order at this time and call for any public comment on any item not currently listed on our agenda this evening. Seeing none, we move on. We have no meeting minutes this evening, so we'll get right into our hearing. This is a continuation of CP 10-01, EP 10-02, and WR 10-03. Approval or condition, this is a master plan development plan, detailed development plan and natural resource overlay district review for the Hilltop Mall. We are currently open as a public hearing, but I'm going to go ahead and read my legal information for those of you that weren't here before. A staff report has been prepared for the application. This union has been made available seven days prior to this evening's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to the applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. It outlines the criteria which are contained in the staff report along with any written comments and input that has been received through the public notification process for this application. The quasi-adjudicial hearing procedure the commission will follow is set out in state law in the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart to my right. Anyone wishing to speak should fell out of slip and give it to the planning staff before you speak. All letters, reports, or pictures must be marked as exhibited by the planning staff before it will be submitted into the record. The public record, please begin all testimony by stating your name and city of residence. Testimony and evidence you are directing toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, please identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person does not have to testify in order to submit written materials in link while the public record is open on each application. However, any party wishing for continuance or to keep the record open must make that request before the public hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence so that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be adjudged appealable to the State Landry's Board of Appeals. In addition, Oregon revised Statutes 197-796 requires us to announce the following: the failure of an applicant to various constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damage in circuit court. At this time, I'll ask again if there are any commissioners with any ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias or any other statement to declare.
No.
Okay. Then this time, we will start with a staff report. Amy?
Thanks, Chair Powell. Good evening to planning commissioners. Just want to make sure we get our PowerPoint up on the screen for people to see. The application before you this evening is a concept master development plan, CP 10-01, and a detailed development plan and the water resource overlay district review for redevelopment of the Hilltop Mall includes a new grocery store and retail and parking lot improvements and landscaping improvements for the entire site. The applicant is Hilltop Mall LLC Craig Danielson, and the applicant representing, the representatives are C. John Company, Jill Long with Plain Pal PC is the applicant's attorney who's here this evening, and Mark Piantoni with WH Pacific has been the project manager working on the application with us. The location is 1500 Malala Avenue, and it involves six tax lots, Clatton County map 3, 2E, 5E tax lots 200, 203, 204, 205, 206, and 300. Everyone on that PowerPoint? That's why we're waiting on, going to introduce some exhibits into the record that aren't part of the PowerPoint. The staff PowerPoint is Exhibit 35, and then we've already entered Exhibits 1 through 22 into the record at the last hearing on October 25th. Exhibit 23 is a letter from Becky Hammond-Williams with respect to edible landscaping, edible plants. Exhibit 24 includes a staff memorandum regarding edible plants and landscaping, including a wild edible plants list and an email that was sent to the planning commission describing the code and some of the requirements for landscaping, and that's partly in response to questions that were raised at the last commission with respect to edible plants and landscaping. I believe the applicant is going to respond to that as well as he uses. Exhibit 25 is a conceptual phasing plan for the parking lot improvement specifically the north-south road through the site between Beaver Creek Road and Warner Millney Road. It identifies four phases and the main, for a 20-year phasing period. I'll get into that in more detail later on. Exhibit 26 is a, the most recent revisions to the parking lot in order to meet a condition of approval that is in the staff report for additional connectivity between the parking lot and the Safeway store. The applicant provided this revision to show a sidewalk on the east side of the parking lot, as well as when they, when they did that, they had to reconfigure some parking spaces and so they had to do a revised parking count and revise their landscaping plan to bump up the size of some of the landscaping islands in the center of the parking lot so they could still meet their 10% minimum landscaping. How do we do in terms of?
You do.
Okay, here we go. Exhibit 27 illustrates the proposed new location of the Coffee Rush Building. There's currently a lot line located right in the middle of the Coffee Rush Building, so in order to clean that up, the applicant is proposing to relocate the building rather than do a lot line adjustment, and so that's, should take care of any building wall and fire code issues in there. And Exhibit 28 is a sort of a more enhanced phasing plan called the sphere, spheres of influence. It illustrates how each of the buildings will be responsible for a particular improvement to the parking lot landscaping and connectivity requirements, vehicular and pedestrian sidewalk in the site. Exhibit 29 are some written code responses from the applicant's architect with respect to roofline modulation. Exhibit 30 are pedestrian lighting specifications for the retail buildings. Exhibit 31 and 32 are both letters of support from Scott Austin and Joe Crenshaw. They're both tenants in the site. Exhibit 33 indicates the proposed roofline elevations for the retail building to show compliance with the roofline standards for large retail buildings. Exhibit 34 is a revised condition of approval number three, which will be recommended by staff tonight to ensure that the vehicular and pedestrian connectivity through the site is adequate for the duration of the master plan. Exhibit 35 is this PowerPoint, and Exhibit 36 is the applicant's PowerPoint. We're also introducing a new Exhibit 37 into the record, which is a staff estimate of costs of curb and gutter and sidewalk for the remainder of the phases that are not included in the detailed development plan. And on the backside of that sketch, so the sketch shows the linear distance of sidewalk that would be needed through the site, and there's an associated cost with that, showing the spreadsheet and how we came up with that, and it's based on our Development Services Department estimates for curb gutter costs $12 per linear foot, and sidewalk per square foot, square foot costs $5.25 in this workup. So with those, I'll continue with my PowerPoint presentation. This concept development plan identifies the layout phasing, requested adjustments, and mitigation of development for the Hilltop Mall, as well as future development, site layout, and connectivity. The detailed development plan includes roadway design for the grocery store, design review for the facades of the new grocery store and retail, and landscaping improvements. This slide indicates the surrounding zoning, the site, the zone C. General Commercial. The C. General Commercial Zone does not have any floor area ratio standards minimums like the MUC 2 Zone on the east side, which is the old Walmart site. You also have MUC 1 zoning to the north of Warner Millney Road. There's also multifamily housing zoning immediately to the west, and to the south and west, we have mixed-use employment zoning. It is located at a critical intersection of the city with Beaver Creek Road, Malala Avenue, and Warner Millney Road, all designated as major core arterials, and Malala Avenue and Beaver Creek Road in particular designated as transit corridors in our transportation system plan, and subsequently there are standards for development on those, on those roads. This aerial photograph shows the boundary of the master plan of all of the tax lots under control of the applicant. This is an aerial oblique view of the Beaver Creek Road aspect. You can see that the building currently does not have any transparency or buildings that enter onto Beaver Creek Road. I've shown the approximate location of a stormwater utility easement there crossing on the front of the site. That easement was discussed last week. It connects to the water resource to the west, and there's a pipe underneath there, and the city owns an easement for that section. Does preclude any structures to be built on it, however, parking, landscaping, sidewalks, and those sorts of amenities can be built there, and the applicant has proposed in that location parking as well as a couple of pedestrian plazas, one on the east side where the existing entry is, and one on the west side where Beaver Creek Road entrances there. This is an aerial view of the entire site from the east, showing pretty much the entire site and some of the adjacent pieces. We can refer back to this if we need to. The first phase of the proposal is Phase 1, which is demolition of the existing vacant 98,000 square foot structure, which includes spaces that will retail and that will be completely demolished, and there will be construction of a new grocery retail building with approximately 55,000 square feet, and retail space abutting that is approximately 22,000 square feet of retail. The detailed development plan have about 572 stalls of landscaping in it, sorry, parking in there. They'll be doing upgrades to the parking lot and site landscaping and pedestrian connectivity throughout that detailed development plan. Proposed development in the future includes the following phases. Phase 1B, within two to five years, includes the development of a restaurant pad on the west side of the Beaver Creek Road entrance. That's just to the north of the water resource area. Phase 10 includes proposed construction of a gas fuel service center and associated landscaping next to Key Bank. Phase 3, five to 10 years approximately, would include demolition of the US Bank building at the corner and construction of two new commercial buildings and development of a pedestrian plaza. Phase 4 is anticipated at the last stage of development, and that is including all the remainder of the site, Bugattis Building G, the movie theater, and McDonald's. This is an illustration of the conceptual phasing plan. Area in yellow is the detailed development plans that is before you, and Phase 3 at the corner, Phase 2 is where the gas islands would go at a subsequent plan, and Phase 1B is where the restaurant would be located, and Phase 4 includes the remainder of the parcels. Traffic analysis was done for the three phases, indicates the first phases, 1 and 2, which are expected to be complete by 2012 from relatively traffic impact since there's very little increase over the prior use, and they occur within two years, so there would be very little impact. At the time, Phase 3 is completed. The applicant has proposed to continue monitoring the traffic situation, and if traffic conditions warrant, there may be a requirement to provide a proportional share to mitigate for a possible level of service impact at the Warner Millney Leland Road, Leland Avenue intersection off-site. There's a condition of approval in the packet that the applicant's staff have worked on to assure that the traffic will be adequate at that stage. There was also review of the existing driveway intersections from the site on through all of the public roads, and there's no mitigation recommended at this time, however, ongoing safety and operations analysis for the driveways is recommended in subsequent phases. Natural Resource Overlay District Review consisted of the following adjustment requests. Basically, what is there now is a confined water resource wetland area that is designated on the city's maps. The code requires a 50-foot buffer from the top of bank or the edge of wetland. The existing buffer now is about eight to nine feet, and the applicant is proposing to increase that buffer to between 22 to 28 feet. Based on their review of the existing conditions on the site, they calculated an impact area of about 1,300 square feet, and subsequently they have to double that for their mitigation, which is about 2,600 square feet, and they've actually proposed about 4,774 square feet of plantings with native plantings. David Evans and Associates, our wetland consultant, reviewed that report, provided some recommendations for conditions of approval, which are to provide a five-year monitoring and maintenance plan as required by code, and also to conduct the Type 1 verification of the resource. And the purpose of the Type 1 verification is to overlay the actual existing conditions with the 50-foot buffers mapped by Oregon City and provide a onsite determination of where the edge of the resource actually is because it's been confined within the roadway and a pavement area for about 15 years, and it's a recognition of the existing conditions on the site. The applicant is proposing to increase that buffer and replant it. So the David Evans and Associates has no problem with the mitigation plan. They've recommended approval of that. They're just recommending that they go through the Type 1 verification process and provide additional mapping and findings for that. The interior street design of this site is a key for approval of the requested adjustments. From the beginning, staff recommended the applicant provide a strong north-south and east-west connection to the site similar to a public street. There are impediments and legal constraints to requiring the public street on the site, and what we've worked out with the applicant is that the applicant should provide all of the amenities that are associated with a pedestrian and vehicular connectivity through the site that provides good connectivity, safe movement, separation of vehicle and pedestrian areas. And one of the things that was raised by the planning commission as well as by staff is how will that connectivity be built over the next 20 years? What we've recommended is a revision through condition of approval 3 that provides adequate triggers for development of that. And to summarize that recommendation, the requirement would be to complete the sidewalks and street sections in future site plans or when future permits for tenant improvements or site work within each sphere of influence reach a cumulative amount of $100,000. And that's what's recommended. There'll be some discussion of that amount and how it's phased in as we go forward. The building elevations that have been proposed, there's obviously four elevation, four main elevations. The east elevation is the one that faces Malala Avenue, and that has a retail component along the majority of that. You can see on the top the retail that's proposed. Those are all tenant spaces. All of the design review criteria were met with one exception for roofline articulation for a large retail building requires that an applicant provide two of four features. Those can include parapet wall to break up any large dominant roofline, a overhang of at least three feet, and roof planes or that are roof planes and then three or more roof tiles, I believe is the title of this. The applicant has proposed to meet those criteria through horizontal eave overhangs into overhanging the space and the use of parapet walls, and we'll go into more detail with that. The north elevation is the main elevation. That is the safeway elevation that's proposed. The west elevation is the truck screening wall elevation, so the applicant has attempted to meet all the transparency requirements on that elevation through the use of rear windows as well as false windows on the truck screening wall. And there's a provision in the code that allows an applicant to meet those transparency requirements with false windows. So I believe the west elevation meets most of the, all of the standards for transparency, and the applicant has proposed to use the truck screen wall articulation for both the roofline requirement as well as the horizontal wall articulation requirement, and that's been that. Finally, we have the west elevation, which is the other retail elevation, and that is the one that's facing Beaver Creek Road, the most prominent elevation from the public right-of-way. The west side, south side, sorry. The west side of the south elevation is where the pedestrian plaza is proposed. There's also a pedestrian plaza on the east side of the south elevation that would be right where the bus station is, just to give you an idea of how far these elevations are when we talk about the adjustments. The south elevation on the west side is about 40 feet from the public right-of-way, and the east side is about 220 feet. Code criteria listed here includes the street sidewalks in public places, public and street trees, C. General Commercial District, tree protection standards, Natural Resource Overlay District, administration procedures, off-street parking and loading, supplemental zoning regulations, site plan and design review, and master plans. The applicant's requested seven adjustments from the city code. Six of these adjustments are dealt with through the master plan adjustment approval criteria, and the seventh adjustment has its own set of approval criteria under the Natural Resource Overlay District. First requested adjustment is to the maximum permitted setback in the, in the general commercial zone of five feet, and that is partly because of the easement area, which creates, precludes putting a building of the size proposed right along the, right along the setback area. The second adjustment requested is for parking in front of the building. Code requires the parking to be placed on the side or rear of the building. The third adjustments deal with institutional and commercial building standards, one of which, the first one requires that 1762-055-C5, 60% of the frontage, when you have over 150 feet of frontage, 60% of that frontage has to have buildings within five feet of the property line. And so for the same reasons why the maximum allowed setback is requested, an adjustment from that, they request an adjustment from 1762-055-C5. 1762-05D2 requires that front facades be oriented toward the public street, and the applicant has proposed the retail facades oriented toward Beaver Creek, but not the primary grocery store facade, which is oriented inward toward the site on the north side. And the last code revisions that were adopted by the city sought to clarify that by making that a primary architectural facade requirement shall face the public street. So it's a little clearer in the code now, but the applicant applied prior to that standard. Let's see, the other fifth standard is that front facades shall be, primary entrance way for each commercial or retail establishment shall face the major street. With the exception of the retail stores, there's no primary entrance way to the grocery store. This standard also requires that for buildings of a certain size, over 300 feet in horizontal width, that there be two building entrances facing us for transit streets, and this is a transit street on Beaver Creek Road, so the code would require two, and there are no main building entrances to grocery stores from the transit streets. So finally, the width of the vegetated corridor, which I've discussed already, is requested to be about 22 feet. Approval criteria for master plans are as follows: that the overall general plan be consistent with Chapter 1765, that the transportation system has sufficient capacity, that public services and infrastructure have sufficient capacity or can be made available at the time of each phase, that any fortified resource within the boundary of the site is protected according to the, and in this case, that's the Natural Resource Overlay District, that the general development plan, including the development standards and impact mitigation thresholds, and improvements adequately mitigates for any impact from each phase, and that the general development plan be consistent with Oregon City Comprehensive Plan and its ancillary documents. We've provided findings for all of these and conditions of approval to address any that haven't been fully addressed. With respect to the Phase 1 detailed development plan, these are the approval criteria. All development and impact mitigation of the general plan. Any other applicable zoning regulations that are not against the concept plan are met unless an adjustment to those regulations has been applied for and approved pursuant to 1765-070, and that detailed development plan conforms with the standards in Chapter 1762, which is site plan and design review criteria unless adjusted per that section of adjustments. The approval criteria for adjustments is as follows. Firstly, the adjustment must equally or better meet the purpose of the regulation to be modified. Secondly, if more than one adjustment is being requested, and that is the case here... Secondly, if more than one adjustment is being requested, and that is the case here, the cumulative effect of the adjustments results in a project that is still consistent with the overall purpose of the zone. Third, the city designated gold five resources are protected to the extent otherwise required by Title 17. Fourth, that any impacts resulting from the adjustment are mitigated. And if an environmental zone, the proposal has as few significant detrimental environmental impacts on the resource and resource values as is practicable. Finally, that proposed adjustment be consistent with the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan and ancillary documents. So essentially, as you review the applicant's presentation and the staff report, the adjustments that are being proposed need to be mitigated for any, the intent of the zone and the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan. Staff has recommended conditions of approval to ensure that there is adequate mitigation for the adjustments, and be willing to go into detail on any of those conditions of approval. If the connotations of approval that are before you, you do not feel that they are adequate, you can revise them, you can add conditions of approval. If you don't feel the conditions of approval are adequate, and they cannot be made adequate, then your options to deny the application if it's so substantive that they cannot be mitigated for or cannot be tweaked with the existing site plan. Does that make sense? Okay. With respect to condition of approval three, which has to do with the design of the interior streets, we have proposed the following condition of approval. And it reads as follows: to improve pedestrian and vehicular connectivity through the site in compliance with OCMC 1752-070, OCMC 1762-050, A8 and A9, and meet the intent of Oregon City's adopted street standards, and provide a complete urban street design and level of service, the applicant shall construct or extend the proposed north-south and east-west private streets referred to as EW Street running east-west, from the McDonald's intersection in Malala Avenue, and the NS Street running north-south from Beaver Creek Road, signalized intersection to Warner Millney Road, to achieve the following design objectives: minimize vehicular backing movements into the main drive aisles, separate vehicle and pedestrian access, provide complete pedestrian connections on both sides of the drive aisles to the extent practicable, and provide trees and landscaping that complies with Oregon City Municipal Code 1752. And the second part of this condition is what the triggers will be. We've recommended that the improvements be triggered as follows: upon submission of a site plan and design review, application for site improvements pursuant to the approved phasing plan, which is exhibit 25, or if redevelopment of a building, tenant improvement or exterior site improvement is proposed sooner than the timeframe specified in the applicant's phasing plan with a cumulative value of $100,000 or more, not including those items specifically exempted from this calculation per OCMC 17.5A-040, C2A-1 through 4, the application shall be conditioned to contribute a proportional share of the total cost of the pedestrian, vehicular, parking lot, and landscaping improvements required for the identifying phase. And just to clarify what those items are that are exempted, certain things are exempt from that calculation. They include seismic upgrades, upgrades to improve accessibility with the, and compliance with the Martin's, with the Disabilities Act. And let's see, what else? Sceptal specialty code upgrades, and there's a few other, what's that? Stormwater upgrades. Those are all exempt from that calculation. Staff has recommended approval of conditions. We'll be happy to answer any questions you have with respect to any of this that have gone over. Okay? Questions?
Did we see the luminary design that was going to be specified? I'm just curious if they're going to be full cut out luminary's like, is this there now?
Exhibit 30 is the pedestrian lighting specifications for the retail component. The lighting specs for the parking lot standards are, I believe, a full cutoff design in the parking lot. And that was a part, the previous exhibit at the previous hearing, but we'll certainly get, find that spec and pull it out and make sure. Code requires a cutoff design for all luminaries.
I have a question regarding, well, a couple of questions actually. First one is regarding condition of approval three. We talked about the east-west and north-south access. I know we're in, in the condition of approval three, we talked about making it available for pedestrians on both sides, et cetera, but we haven't, didn't talk about managing speed or anything along those lines. And I brought it up last week, it's something we need, I think we need to look at and review because that, you have a risk of a speedway going through there both ways. So that's something I'd like to consider as part of the condition of approval. The other question I had, and maybe regarding the sphere of influence when we're adding buildings, a question I have is if you have a particular portion of this sphere of influence building that's going to need sidewalks, et cetera, at what point do you cut that off? I mean, for instance, if you had a, some construction here that needs to be maintained that interconnects with another piece, do you have to connect? Is that part of it, or do you just stop it? You know, I don't want to, but what I'm concerned about is having a bit of dent in sidewalks, you know, in a development. I guess as you continue on, but with the sphere of influence that's new to me, and I'm just not sure how that's handled.
I want to make sure that we have the right condition of approval up there on the, on the dais. If you check exhibit 34, I believe, it should state that, notwithstanding any of the previous things, there should be a statement there that at the end of Phase 20, all of the necessary improvements will be complete regardless of the, does it say that?
Yeah, that's the original, I think that's the original staff report condition.
Okay.
What we identified in condition in exhibit 34, is that it?
Okay. In that case, we have the wrong recommendation for condition of approval up there, and we will need to revise that to make sure. If I see a question though, if a tenant improvement hits $100,000 on their, within their sphere of influence, which we'll track as we go along, and they'll be responsible for that either at that time or before the end of the 20-year phasing period. Even.
Right. It says, it says no later than 15 years after the date of adoption of this plan.
And that's what.
And that's great. I appreciate that. But there's that, that fine line between when you actually start that and 15 years later when you have to finish that. And my question is, this is, is, is there enough meat in this that if there is a development piece that's interconnected with another development piece, will those connect? And will, will they be, will they be responsible to build that connection so we have pedestrian access, we're going to have a sidewalk any, you know, 500 feet and then another sidewalk starting? Is that, I don't know if I'm.
So what, the applicant can, when they, when they come and present, take a plus fee and this is all that, but one of the new issues that we've seen in doing this master plan was that there are existing long-term leases on the property that would prevent going in and taking out parking lots, parking stalls, and impacting the current tenants of those buildings. So in essence, when you look at that sphere of influence plan, you can almost think of them as, almost like properties. And if property A up on the top hits 100, hits the trigger, they will build it. So there is the potential that yes, it will be discontinuous. Once 100,000 hits, they will not be building the whole north-south connection. You only think of them as almost like separate properties. We went around and around quite a bit, I'm trying to understand what our options were with, with current lease holders like that. So this is what we've pulled from that much. So in answer to your question, is that, there is that possibility?
Well, that, and that's why we're talking about is the master plan, and I understand that, and I can't expect everything you may not want. I just want to make sure that, that we don't have a lot of disconnecting points and a real mess for traffic and things like that within the process.
When full buildout happens, we will have a contingency.
And I'm not, and I, and I see that and I appreciate that. I'm more concerned about the interim. That's what concerns me and how, and you know, we have to have, I think we have to look at it a logical approach in some fashion, and, and, and that's why we talked about master plan, because, you know, we all look at this and say, well, isn't that really what a master plan is? Is to say, what will, what will these intersections be? Where will they be? What's the, what's the proper plan in that? And does it make sense to align in Phase One as opposed to waiting until Phase Four is aligned? And I guess that's, and it looks to me like it may or may not be a problem. It looks more like it won't be a problem, but I just wanted to make sure that we have, we have enough foresight to plan for that.
Yeah. Well, in, in Phase One, the detailed development plan, you'll have sidewalks constructed on both sides of the access road up to level with the surface floor. And you'll have the east sidewalk constructed as far up as Building G Retail. And then the subsequent west side of that north-south connection, which would include the theater redevelopment in Phase Four, and the small 7,200 square foot retail section on Millau Paint Building is part of Phase Four too. So there will be probably only one side of the pedestrian connection complete for the foreseeable future, and then you'll get the second half of that after year 10 under the current phase.
Well, so I guess my own, my, kind of just put this in a nutshell, my biggest concern and, and, is, is pedestrian safety and vehicular safety. And if you, if I can be convinced that we have a, a traffic calming devices in place, that we don't really have to worry so much about pedestrians, I feel a lot better about it. That, that's what I don't see, and I don't see that in this, in this condition. And that, that's kind of, that's why maybe I'll address that. We could talk a little bit more about that, but that would make me feel a lot more warm and fuzzy in that.
As well, the applicant has some exhibits and things to talk to you about.
Very good, thank you.
Peter, you're saying that on the west side, it's basically a half-street improvement for pedestrian access? The rest, well, the east, the east side of the access road, the west side of the parking lot is essentially like a half-street.
Yeah, right.
And that's a better pedestrian access in this plan that exists today.
Correct. Yeah, it does not include a parking lane.
Right.
Because the parking is on the east side in the parking lot.
Yep.
It would have three wells, about at least a seven-foot sidewalk, I believe, and a, at least a 12-foot travel line.
Well, it's everybody's hope that we're going to be drawing a lot of pedestrians to this site.
Right.
I would hope that that's the plan, so I just want to make sure we're protecting them.
Right. And with respect to traffic calming and staff signs, the applicant, I believe, hasn't exhibited to show for that.
Very good.
I've got a question still related to this. So your recommendation is to minimize, just minimize vehicular backing movements into the main drive aisles, just minimize? Why not eliminate? I mean, we're trying to create a vehicular connection, pedestrian connection, and it just seems like that goes, you know, against.
The, with a, with a private driveway within a parking lot, I don't believe the applicant has proposed any parking on that lane, except over on the east side. The rest, the rest of parking lane doesn't have any parking proposed along the directly abutting sidewalks. So that's basically just a vehicle line separated from the sidewalk by trees. On a private driveway, we do allow backing movements into driveways. It's not like a public right-of-way or an alley. And to the extent possible, the need to provide parking on the site in compliance with the national requirements as well as the minimum number of spaces required, we feel the applicant's done an adequate job of minimizing that danger to the extent it's practicable. We were primarily concerned with the north-south access road on the west side of the parking lot as providing the one main connection through the site. We didn't really pay attention to the east side of the parking lot, even though it's important, it, it tees into the main facade of the grocery store, so it's not as much as important as a, as a vehicle connection. Vehicles won't be using it to, for example, enter into the site from Beaver Creek Road and go all the way out to Warner, Warner Millney Road.
So while we're, I'm sorry to interrupt, but while we're talking about that, the truck traffic, that will be using that, that access.
We will.
And that, looking at the plan, it appears that there's enough room for a vehicle, a truck to pull in and then pull it off the main drive and then back in. I don't know what the dimensions on that is, kind of hard to see. So I wasn't, I didn't, I didn't get that number, so I'm curious about that and whether, whether that's the case. And then the second thing, part, part of that is, and we all asked about this the same as the last time, was that additional vehicles, delivery trucks and that type of thing, where is their access, or where is their backup queuing going to occur?
The applicant has an exhibit that talks about that movement in detail.
Very good.
And some of the dimensions that are needed to ensure that.
Okay.
I just had one follow-up, I think, to what we've been talking about. The pedestrian walkway starts at Beaver Creek Road on that west side driving lane and continues up to the 25,000 square foot retail. And then it appears that once it gets the north end of the retail, it's discontinuous from there up to the Warner Millney Loop.
There is, oh, yeah, it's kind of offset, but there's an existing walkway under the canopy of that retail, which is sufficiently wide to provide a good separation.
Beyond the building.
Beyond the building, right. Beyond the building further north to, up past Bugattis.
Right.
Right.
Across the parking lot.
Across the parking lot.
Up to Warner Millney.
Yeah. We've got the condition of approval written so that that would be complete. It's about 175 feet of sidewalk. There is a grade problem there, I believe, on the east side at Bugattis that would require some design, so our estimates are ballpark. I'm not sure how constrained it is to get a complete sidewalk on both sides, but our hope is to require a sidewalk all the way to Warner Millney on both sides.
I didn't see in the documents that we have, or the full list of the conditions of approval.
They should be on the staff report, the very last page of the staff report. I don't believe they're on the dais, so, so if we haven't uploaded those to the dais, we start on page, let's see, page 87 of your staff report. Okay. I can certainly make you a copy of those.
Yeah, I don't, no.
I can also, I can also put them on the screen.
Yeah, that's right. It's such, for many of the documents. Yeah, this can't get it to here, that's the problem. That's our technology. Right. And my memory doesn't stand that to when I looked at it on my computer either. Right, and, and my memory doesn't extend back to when I looked at it on my computer either.
Well, I mean, we can look, you can work on that if you want to.
Yeah, I'll go make you a copy right now.
And um, next step here, you're no further questions of staff at this time, then um, the applicant is welcome to come up.
Good evening commissioners, uh, my name's Jill Long. I'm an attorney with Lane Powell in Portland, Oregon, as you know, and I'm here representing the applicant this evening. My next name is Mark Preniconi. Mark's actually a C E John company. Um, and I will really briefly introduce, just so you know, who on our technical team is here tonight. You don't have the full team that we have. I think everyone could really possibly want to talk to. Uh, we've got Jeff Dalton, our environmental engineer, Gary Brown, our architect. Um, we've got Chris Frammer from Kittleson and Associates, our traffic engineer. Uh, we also have Diane Phillips from Safeway, and then Carol Fugui and Clay Anderson, uh, the owners of the property. Uh, I want to thank everyone again for coming tonight and listening to all the details of this plan. Thanks back for their efforts. Um, we really appreciate all the work that they've put into the staff report. Um, we generally are, are in agreeance with that. And we have a few items of concern that I have to talk with you about tonight, but we think we're on the right track and we'll look forward to a decision this evening. I'm gonna hand it over now to Mark. Mark's gonna go through uh, some of the questions that were raised at the last planning commission meeting. I also have a letter that we prepared this afternoon to turn into, which I will overlook in my testimony. I want to note that there's been some different condition of approval number three, the language on the screen tonight, some language we saw earlier today. So we'll try and be sure that we're talking well about the same thing when we work over that. I'll grab the letter now and send it to everyone.
We take this moment to reiterate the fact, before some partner of W A specific has nightmares, I am at C E John Company, not W A specific.
No further detail. I'll let Mark take off the best powerpoint presentation.
Thank you. Um, my best of the staff, as well as uh, my own design team and Safeway's design team, we've done an incredible amount of work over the last couple of weeks to get where we're at. And a lot, a lot of iterations have gone on and uh, we appreciate everybody's patience. But I think the deal this evening is, is really not issue again with everything we talked about last time. It's more just augment what we did with a quick review of just the important parts of the application. And then we'll, we'll bring out some of the information you were asking of Pete previously. I think we can answer some of those questions for you. Let's just take a minute to really, this project has a lot of moving parts, but in a way it's actually really simple and I like to start over again, just to kind of tell you what we're doing. Um, first of all, just a couple of things about the site to keep in mind as we go through some of the issues and we find the mouse. The existing site, when it was developed in the early seventies, oriented towards Malala. I mean, McDonald's oriented that way, the existing building oriented that way. So we're kind of stuck with that axis as we go into a redevelopment and that impacts kind of how we did a few things because we can't change certain elements on this site. Again, the site plan, uh, or the existing site plan predates Beaver Creek, as I understand it. As I understand it, when this thing was developed, Beaver Creek was just a simple country road and, and not a significant road at all. Beaver Creek also has an irregular, uh, not good, not bad, just irregular kind of orientation. Uh, it's not straight. It really doesn't fit our site. Uh, perpendicular or parallel. It's so bleak or, I can't remember the right word for it, as the angle it hits our site. But as we get into this redevelopment, again, stop the thing about what we're doing. It's actually relatively simple. We're taking this existing structure down, which is, I'll get the hang of this. We're taking this existing structure down, which is somewhere between ninety-eight and ninety-nine thousand square feet. And we're taking part of that existing square footage and putting it back on the site in a little bit different configuration. Approximately fifty-five thousand seven hundred square feet of that is going into a grocery. There's about twenty-two thousand square feet of that wrapping around the grocery as shop retail space. And about seventy-eight hundred square feet of that as a future pad, retail pad in this location. So all in all, we're putting back approximately eighty-seven thousand feet where there used to be ninety-eight or ninety-nine thousand square feet. We've reoriented the, the loading components of the bigger structure, so it's now facing nominal west versus south as it does now. Which, I'll get the hang of this, bear with me. The loading components right here versus where it is in the existing structures is right here. Okay, so we, we, that's kind of where we're at. That's kind of a brief summary of this project. Again, it's not that complicated as a development. This is in a green field. It's taking an existing bigger box, turning it into a smaller box and a pad. I'd like to address the adjustments. Again, I'm not going to read this for you. There's six adjustments related to the building. And you know, again, Pete said, I'll repeat them just quickly. Number one is maximum setbacks. Number two is parking behind the building. Number three is building five feet from the property line. Number four is front facade towards the street. Just an interesting topic, just to consider a minute, and I'm not trying to argue. Here it says the main building's Safeway. Okay, it's the biggest building, but from owner's standpoint, the main buildings are retail shops. That's what makes this thing financially feasible. So don't kind of underestimate the value of the retail shops here and their importance to the overall development. That's my developer's wish. Uh, and then one, at least one entry to the street. And again, we have almost eight entries towards Beaver Creek in the shop buildings. So we, we don't have one to Safeway, but we do have about seven to eight, depending on how the shops break out. We do have a retail presence at Beaver Creek. And again, we appreciate the staff's support of the adjustments as stated. I didn't put the N, the N rod one up here because I think it was pretty self-explanatory by Pete. Let me hit you again on an older slide. Again, this will reduce some of the limiting conditions. Um, we have existing leases, which is why we're not bringing the entire site into redevelopment. At some future time, and please remember this is an official construction here on, when these sites do come in for redevelopment, it will be before this board to comply with the current zoning poster. Right now, we can't do these for a lot of reasons, not the least of which is they have leases in place, kind of instead of doing view of tearing the building down in the middle of the leases, they hate that. And it's only this is considering with the site research and sort of what you can and can't do in the vicinity of their buildings. And that's the way the retail world works. And the gray areas up here is meant to kind of show what we really can't do much with at this point. Um, we have a, a storm grain event. Each slide is actually better than our slide running right through here. We have a dish, an open dish running in this area. And again, Beaver Creek is not square to the site, so we're having to deal with that issue. And all these factors went into how we finally did orient the buildings. Again, if we go back to the six adjustments, all we're right to building orientation. I mean, every single one of them is, is a very issue, same thing. And, and again, the theme and what we tried to do is still activate Beaver Creek to the best we could, given the restrictions we had of what we can fit on this site and how we access the site. This site is, the site plan, which has been a little fluid here the last couple of weeks. Just to tell you a couple of the major changes since we were here last time, Pete kind of hit on it, let me find my mouse. This is, we narrowed this road down at, again, the city's request to twenty-four feet wide, or two twelve, twelve-foot lanes in here, which in itself is a traffic calming device. We've added, we've moved, we've confined the parking lot essentially. This is a curb and landscaping, I'm sorry, a curved sidewalk and landscaping in the north-south direction, and there is no parking and no penetrations through this sidewalk into the north-south road. On the east side, we've added another north-south sidewalk. However, there is some parallel parking along the strip. There's a circle of landscaping in the middle and there's parallel parking on the outboard side of this side of the parking structure, or, I'm sorry, this side of the parking field. So these have been the major issues and this had a lot of implications. Um, it shifted all the parking bays, which is one of the reasons we got coffee rush off the property line. We really didn't relocate coffee rush, we relocated the parking bays, which required us to relocate coffee rush to get it off the property line. So that's really what happened with that issue. And that's really the biggest changes we've made. And it has to be impacts on connectivity, which we'll get into in a minute, and I think it makes for a better project when we're all said and done. But again, I think we met the purpose of seventeen sixty-two oh five five. In the purpose statement, part of it, or an excerpt from there is to promote creative, functional and cohesive development that is compatible with surrounding areas. And you know, the functional part of it is the parts work. Uh, it, we don't think, and I don't think anybody will say that Beaver Creek can support walk-in retail traffic. There's no parking on Beaver Creek and the pedestrian traffic isn't sufficient to, to really service that kind of retail. So we've added a parking component there to make it functional, as we have with the retail facing east, as we have with grocery store parking functioning to meet the needs of the grocery people with carts. And trying to minimize the, the, the trip, or minimize the path taken by people with grocery carts. Cohesive, all the parts work. Everything connects with each other. The roads, the, the, the links to the major streets work. It's a cohesive development. To what we can impact now in this detailed development plan, again, we can't impact the entire site at this time for reasons that are given. Um, we'll continue on with this. If you have any questions, since we're trying to build on what we did last night, please ask. It's probably easier because we're going to be going over other items as we move through this. Would you like to ask some questions? Please do so, or if you need an embellishment. You asked about the uh, about the traffic control. I apologize, this is hard to read and I had it broken up into the north and south pieces and it's still hard to read. But what this is showing are stop bars and stop signs and pedestrian crossing signs throughout the north part of the site. There are a bit of traffic calming, which isn't that obvious. It's coming off Malala. Coming this way. This first pedestrian crossing is actually a raised crossing. For the purpose of slowing traffic down as they enter the busiest part of, of this strip. So we, we built in some traffic calming right here and traffic calming off Beaver Creek kind of hits this intersection, which naturally is traffic calming as well as stop signs that'll be there. But these show stop signs and stop bars that'll be placed throughout the north part of the site. Uh, I'll move on to this slide. So the south part of the site. Again, this is, these are where we proposed the, the traffic control uh, elements. I apologize, they're hard to see. I don't know how else to show it now.
Well, it, it is a little hard to see the stop signs on, on my monitor versus the stop. I can see the stop bars, okay. So is there a stop sign as you're coming off of Beaver Creek and you get to that first hallway? Yeah, right there. Is that, is that a, just a stop bar or is that a stop sign? Sorry.
Well, let Chris answer. Chris, let him answer.
Exhibit point six may, you can at least zoom in on some of those areas.
I'll, I'll look at that.
For the record, my name is Chris Frammer from Kittleson Associates in Portland, and we're providing traffic engineering for the project. In answer to your question, that first hallway stop intersection would have both stop bars and stop signs on each approach.
Okay, very good. Um, okay. Okay, good. Thank you. That's, that's answered my question on that. Um, and then across on the north-south, it appears that there's, uh, on, I'm sorry, the, the, the east-west and running across the front of the store, the front side of the store. So from, yeah, so from, as you cross there, is there any, are those raised at all? Or is that a pretty straight shot?
This is a straight shot. What, what happens here is the sidewalk has curved cuts that get off the sidewalk height down to street level. And these are identified crossings with a, a different material and, and a different grid.
Is that traditional? I, I, I mean, I've been to different, I mean, for instance, we have up here at Fred Myers, they have a stop sign, you know, right as you enter the store. Seems to slow people down enough that you don't have, yeah, right at the door. You've got two access doors. I, I don't know what's traditional and, and, you know, you've done a number of traffic studies than I have, but just curious as to what makes sense in that kind of environment when you're coming along and if you've got nothing to slow you down and you've got a straight shot and you don't see a stop sign for a hundred yards. Are you going, are you going to keep your speed down regardless of the pedestrian using?
Right. We, we looked at this in our office, shared with a few different folks, and the, the consensus we came to was have the always stop control on the west side, have the raised crosswalk on the east side, but not to have stop signs at the two crosswalks in between. Part of the concern just became if we keep putting side, stop signs up, we get people, trains start rolling through them and if there's not somebody there, they just start getting that gradual, we're not paying attention anymore. We didn't want to oversign the situation, so we felt this was really the best alternative.
Yeah, and I guess my thought was just maybe raised crosswalk would be more, that would be enough of a deterrent. It wouldn't necessarily have to be a, a stop sign, but maybe a raised, or, or a textured something where you'll.
Yeah, I mean, the intent, as I understand it, is to have the textured pavement at all.
So where you, where you had the hatching, that would be a textured surface?
Correct.
So like a, a stamped grade or brick or something like that?
It'd be a concrete, it'd be a concrete, score, scoreline concrete in the middle of an asphalt sidewalk. So it'd be a different color as well as a different texture.
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, the other kind of factor of traffic calming, which we did narrow against city's request, this, or this north-south piece, the twelve-foot lanes versus the original design we came in with were fifteen-foot lanes.
Yeah, well, we're in, we're in a historic city. People do a lot of things in twelve-foot lanes very quickly. We learned how to drive on small roads. But no, I, I understand. I, that is back to calming uh, process as well. I'm just, I'm just not, I'm, I'm just nervous. I'm just not convinced that that's going to slow traffic uh, uh, coming from the, from the east to the west. That's awesome. I'll get more thought to it, but go ahead with the presentation.
Yeah, the next slide. Again, kind of addressed some of the issues you talked about. This is the connectivity plan for our detailed development plan when we're finished. We've improved connectivity, and again, we went over this last time, we've improved connectivity from Malala Inn, from Beaver Creek Inn here, from Beaver Creek Inn here. This is an additional pedestrian lane between the bus stop uh, through a compacted gravel, um, compacted gravel path to the sidewalk, to the retail buildings. We've added, this, I think was your last time we met, but we've added another sidewalk to this side of the street. So we have sidewalks on both sides of the street of this piece or all of this piece. And again, I think we, we added an additional uh, north-south sidewalk on the east side of this parking field. And everything does connect up to this building thus far, and we'll talk a little bit about the future connectivity a little bit later as we discuss some of those conditions of approval, number three items. And we also, the other thing that happened from, from the one you saw previously, we deleted obviously the angled parking that used to exist going north down this road. Uh, one moment. First of all, sometime in the last, you know, six weeks or so of our design effort, Safeway actually modified their building to make a two-bay loading dock. So there's room for two trucks in the loading dock. This is an attorney study that showed that the trucks could indeed fit in there and get out, as well as get in off Beaver Creek. Uh, just a couple of issues that I think some questions were asked in our last meeting about trucks and queuing and that sort of thing. According to Safeway, they're expecting approximately four trucks a day. Part of the reason there's so few trucks is their distribution center is less than ten miles from here, right up in the two oh five corridor. So I don't think there'll ever be any queuing because we have the capacity to handle two trucks at a time. Not to mention, in addition to the, the semis that are back in, there's plenty of room to the north of them for smaller trucks that deliver many of their products. I guess, you know, I don't know how to answer the question. I think we're trying to eliminate all the queuing. Should we have queuing? At least we have a twenty-acre site with a feeder that runs kind of hours that are contrary to, to the Safeway store. So I think there's plenty of opportunities to get the trucks off the main.
Well, we're allowed to qualify because I'm probably the one that asked the question. I, I'm less concerned about the. I'm less concerned about the eighteen-wheeler queuing because I understand that they're close. And if you have two or four trucks a day, not generally a problem. I'm more concerned about the local delivery, if you will, the Little Debbie guy, the beer guy, all those trucks. You know, they tend to, you go any morning to, or you used to, I'll go any morning to the Daniel's and slip to the back of that, and you see trucks parked everywhere, all trying to unload at the same time. That's my question. And that's an access for pedestrians along that walkway. And that's where I'm, that's my big concern, is that particular piece of the queuing. If you've got, if you're telling me there's enough room for vehicles to pull in off of that main drag in that parking loading area while they unload their products, fine. I just, that's, I think also part of our question is about backing. Backing out, those trucks backing out into that traffic lane, that's the other question I have. And how do we manage that from happening, or not happening rather? So that's the queuing that I'm speaking of, and I don't know what the rest of the condition is.
Yeah, I think part of the answer to your question is the Little Debbie truck. There is room in here even if the big trucks are in the loading dock, unloaded in this area right here. And again, what this shows is that we've made a provision with a zero curve. So the trucks are off the load, come in and then back in and then get out. So the turning movements don't happen in the road. They happen in this confined area.
Good, that's helpful.
So that space where the trucks will be turning into the loading bay, that the crosshatched area is also contrasted, textured surface.
The zero curve is flat to the surface, but it'll be a different material to identify it as a sidewalk. And remember, we have to get off the sidewalk with a handicap access onto that and then back up again.
I can drop in for a second. We shared that same concern on safety and pedestrians. And we really talked closely with the tenant about how that would function. And we feel comfortable, me being the applicant, that, you know, these truck movements and the two-load bay gives plenty of room to get those trucks off the street so that pedestrians have a safe and quiet environment to move through. And with the crosshatched, flat grade, we really feel like there's plenty of protections there.
Okay, thank you.
Any outside comments?
None on truck movements, that's the call.
The other question that came up in our last news, either one of you or so of you asked for further information regarding what pedestrian experience is on the Beaver Creek entry. And we saw this last time. This is a perspective from across, perspective as I was told, from the other side of Beaver Creek. And again, I think it's got a great urban feel. It's an inviting pedestrian environment. It's an activated plaza, just to the right of the Safeway sign. It's pedestrian-friendly, there's plenty of sidewalk room. And we like the idea, it's also kind of bi-directional focus. People can go left or right. There's something good in retail when you get people walking by your stores, your small shops. That's a good thing, not a bad thing. So you can go either way from here equally comfortably. We're not really funneling people either way here. We did some further study to show you what it might look like to walk from that corner. And again, I, these are, I hope that you can see them as well. The top sketch shows kind of starting from the intersection, walking towards the screen wall. And the bottom left is you continue on, and the bottom right is you continue even further north. And I think, you know, it's a screen wall, but I think it does a great job of adding to the streetscape. It's an urban kind of look. The architecture that we tried to include in that screen wall was a little bit of both pieces. It's the transition from shop space to the Safeway space. There's elements from both designs if you come around a corner. We don't have, the corner is kind of highlighted in the previous slide. But I think it's a comfortable, it's a comfortable pedestrian experience. You're not up against the truck, the truck is behind the screen wall. And as you continue north, there is a bigger open area there, but it's, at least it's leading to an activated plaza as you get to safety. And we did the same thing for the other side of the street. The other side of the street is a little harder to define because we don't exactly know what it's going to be. We would hope that an activated plaza would be located towards the road, towards Beaver Creek, and the building will sit fast. And we tried to show what it is looking at the loading areas. And again, I don't think you're looking at anything threatening. You're actually to the north of the proposed pad building. You're on the west sidewalk looking at the loading area. But again, you're not looking at semi, you're looking at, I think, a decent architectural look. There's, as you go into the Safeway loading dock itself, they've added a, for structural purposes as well as aesthetic purposes, a header piece that frames the truck well as you back into the truck well. And again, I think it makes for, again, a pleasant, comfortable experience if you're not feeling like you're eating next to the truck stop or you're not at that truck stop eating. I hope these illustrate what you're looking for. We put a lot of work into the sketches, some architects spent a lot of time doing it in their office.
Yeah, it's very helpful.
Any other questions on the west sidewalk?
Yeah, I do have questions while we're looking at that. The screening, that screening wall, what is that consists of? Those look like windows. What is that? Is that a full window? Is it some sort of designed, what's on it?
Yeah, mostly that glass is either standard glass, or smoked glass, or transparent glass. We have some interesting assumptions about the transparency of the west wall since the west wall is a screen wall, which is kind of an interesting paradox as you get into it in detail. It's meant to be non-transparent. It's meant to be something you can't see, it gives you the look and feel of a window.
Okay.
There's nothing to look at in there that you want to see.
No, that's actually what we're trying to hide, so we don't need to see through it. I just wondered if there was, if you were going to view murals or something along those lines. I don't know. I'm curious about what the screening capabilities or what, you know, what would look good, wouldn't look good. And again, you don't know what's crossed the way. If you had a plaza out there with a restaurant, you may want to have murals there that give some enhancement to that restaurant while you're sitting outside. But as it is today, it may not be an issue. So just curious.
Any other questions on our west sidewalk? I might kind of get into just some internal information on the conditions of approval. Again, just trying to ask for some maintenance, if you will. We're asking for deletion of these conditions of approval, not because we have a problem with them, as I think we satisfied them. And, you know, some part of the conditions of approval, if you're listening wrong, just got to comply with them. We're just saying, the condition of approval ten has to deal with root elements. And Pete showed you some of the support information we've given you to say that we do comply with code requirements for the root elements. Those are the PDFs with the red marks showing where we comply and how we comply. Condition of approval twenty-one is transparency on the west elevation. And again, there's a very detailed analysis of the glass, both transparent and translucent that's on the west wall. Condition of approval number twenty-three was more of just a requirement to furnish information on cut sheets or lighting fixtures. We have an empty level lighting fixtures, which we did furnish. It shouldn't be in your package. And condition of approval twenty-five is simply the lot line issue related to coffee rush if it stays where it is, exactly if it stays where it is. And we overlaid the property line on the revised site plan, and it is no longer on the property line. So we have to move coffee rush to make it work, basically. Again, we have no issues here, and it's not even, we're not trying to argue whether they're appropriate or not. We're just thinking of the met conditions throughout the zones. Again, that condition of approval, we're just trying to clarify. These languages in the conditions was kind of a short sentence. We just wanted to make sure we're all, it's our intention to provide stormwater retention for all impervious area we've added in the detailed development plan, as well as quality control for all impervious area we've added to the detailed development plan. And we're not arguing the fact, we're just trying to clarify the way we understand the condition.
Do you see that happening at one location or two locations or scales?
Well, the retention, I believe, is going to be done with buried pipes, large diameter pipes in the vicinity of the southern portion of the theater, where the existing field is now. It's just a good place to hide those in the right, near where it's discharged eventually. So there won't be anything visible, it won't be in the C O code or that sort of thing. Either just clarification. Two conditions of approval. Again, we're not asking they be deleted, we're just telling you how we propose to comply with them. One is to work with Primet regarding the bus stop, or the bus shelter, I should say. And the other one has to do with putting amenities in that plaza adjacent to the bus shelter. There's a, I believe there's an exhibit point two in your package. We have had an initial contact with Primet. They requested that we get the bus shelter behind the city's sidewalk. And I'm a little confused because it already is. We'll work with them and, you know, get the bus shelter where they want it and produce the plaza with the amenities that are required. We just don't know what they're looking for yet, so we'll pursue that. Next issue, who is going to handle?
I'm actually going to put that on hold and just talk for a few minutes through my letter on the landscaping issues that we raised last time. If you look on page two of the letter, paragraph four and five, we consulted with our landscape architect on both the issue of edible plants and also on the issue of relocating trees to their locations in Oregon City. We were really pleased with the courtesy to be able to talk about that with him. And he submitted two letters, which are exhibit D and E two of this letter, talking about both of those issues. I'll just talk on them real briefly and if you have any questions, feel free to ask. On the edible plants issue, specifically our landscape architect was concerned that we wouldn't be able to use those types of plants and also meet the landscape code requirements that are relevant to our application today. It makes it a difficult thing to achieve for the applicant. Additionally, he has some safety concerns about edible plants and non-edible or poisonous plants to visitors to the site and felt that as a professional recommendation, he would not recommend that for this type of environment. On the issue of transfer of trees, again, not part of the code criteria relevant today, but we had a conversation with him about the ability to do that. He had some concerns about the cost of moving trees and the likelihood of trees living through a relocation. His letter, which is activity to my letter, has a lot of detailed information in it, but just to generalize, these trees haven't been maintained in a way for relocation. It takes a two- or three-year period prior to relocation to sort of prepare a tree to live through that type of movement and trauma. And these trees just haven't had that preparation. So the likelihood of them living is very, very low. And the cost of moving them would be in the eight to ten thousand dollar per tree ballpark. So it's a high cost for a low likelihood of survival. And his recommendation is that it's not suitable for this site. And that said, outside of the application process that we're here for tonight, we're happy to talk with neighbors that at their own costs and expense might be interested in relocating trees and would be happy to do that outside of this context. And have reached out to those neighbors that have shown an interest. So we look forward to continuing that conversation outside of the planning commission hearing. Any questions on either of those issues? All right, if you come up with something later, feel free to ask. I'll move on to talk about condition of approval number three. And if I could, Pete, I saw you handing out different language. If I could see it, that would be great. Yeah, this is the one. So this is the language that we saw this morning for the first time. And our letter in response is related to this language. It's a little bit different than what you saw during the presentation. I don't know if other than that, it's interesting to look at it. But I'll kind of talk through it and feel free to stop me. It's fairly complicated and technical, so stop at any time. As I said, we're very happy with the staff's first recommendation of approval and in agreement with all the conditions other than condition number three. We feel that condition number three is very difficult and burdensome for the applicant and would cause very serious issues with the redevelopment of the site over time. I'm going to walk through our major concerns with it and talk about some solutions. One of the first issues we have that we've talked about are the practical limitations on the site related to existing leases. And I've heard a lot about this, I won't pound it into the ground. But as you know, the owner does not have unilateral authority to do certain things on the face four of the site, face two, face three, the sites outside of the detailed development plan. In particular, we talked a lot about the theater lease, which has a protective zone of our parking. That lease runs in its original term through two thousand twenty-seven, so almost to the end of our master plan horizon. It's just impossible with any certainty for the applicant to tell you exactly what's going to happen with that parcel. And there are options that go after the original term. What the applicant can do and is willing to do is commit to the vision for the development as the redevelopment occurs. So we've provided some slides. I'm going to see if I can do this thing here. We've got the future phase, you've already seen this. I'm going to actually move forward one. We've got the future connectivity vision, which shows you what the applicant will do when redevelopment occurs. Again, we can't predict with exact certainty, but we can say if the theater were going to come in for redevelopment, that the red line that you see, and I'm going to point out here, along the theater sphere of influence, would at that time be developed and a sidewalk would occur. And I'll go back one just to show you what that theater sphere of influence looks like. That would be the blue dotted line that surrounds the theater. And we worked with staff to come up with a sphere of influence concept. It's difficult, and I know you've asked questions about it, to figure out how to break this up without piecing in future development, but also giving the city, the owner's commitment to what the future connectivity could look like as redevelopment occurs, you know, hoping that it occurs the way we expect it to. So we've created these spheres of influence. They trigger per building. And that would help us to identify where those improvements could occur. Another one of our issues with the language that's been proposed is proportionality. There's a great concern, especially with the hundred thousand dollar trigger that's been proposed by staff, that you could very easily come up with a hundred thousand dollars with a tenant improvements for, say, a medical, the city dentist's office. Easily could have great, much more money spent on tenant improvements. But really, nothing going on in the redevelopment scheme. And so you could trigger a disproportionate amount of improvement, say, to build the full sidewalk or connections related to tenant improvements. I'm going to let Mark talk a little bit more. I know we've seen some cost estimates from the city that Pete talked about. We haven't actually prepared any cost estimates yet, but I think Mark can talk in more detail about some of the costs to the owner for that type of trigger of improvement when we're talking about TI.
First of all, I agree with Pete's numbers. I have no qualm with what he said about the cost to put sidewalk in. I think what's kind of missing from this analysis, and I think I can show you using the theater side, of what's missing and why the proportionality is important. Because literally, for a dollar of TI, you could be triggering ten dollars worth of site work. And as a perfect example, let's take a look at the theater side. Now, you know, a simple solution would be, okay, just build the sidewalk from this point to this point. And Pete's numbers are perfectly adequate for that. It's not that much, I don't have the right number ahead of me, but it's ten, fifteen thousand dollars or something, which is certainly proportional. The problem is, is you just lost thirty parking spaces. Now, driven the fact that there's probably code language that allows joint parking, we can be co-compliant, but we're not lease compliant. You know the difference? The leases sometimes, we'll say you have to comply with code, and sometimes we'll say you have to have a specific number of parking spaces per square foot, or a thousand square feet. So what's the solution to mitigate that? If we move thirty spaces, we've got a sidewalk, but now we've got a tenant space that isn't functional. So in this particular location, there is a fix. It's to take this whole parking field and turn it the other way. It's to run your bays this way, left to right, east to west. And maybe you can get back twenty of the thirty spaces you lost building the sidewalk. But what's the cost to do that? That's the question mark, and that's the missing piece. I just wrote down, you know, some numbers. That particular parking field is about sixty-five thousand square feet. The cost of the area in a parking field is about three dollars a square foot. So if you use your hundred thousand dollar threshold, say they replaced all the plumbing fixtures, you've just reduced, just with this item, almost two hundred thousand dollars worth of site work. And a type three review, potentially, type two or type three review, which again, is adding time and cost to the process. The other part that you'd have to take into account, if you don't replace the parking spaces, you've reduced, and every four or five parking spaces is approximately what it takes to support a thousand square feet of retail. Five per thousand. Five per thousand, you know, just a round number, it might be plus or minus one. But you've lost, for every five parking spaces, you've lost a thousand square feet of retail and the redevelopment of the shopping center. What's that worth if you don't replace it? And that's where it really gets expensive, and that's the hidden costs that you have to consider in this proportionality. Just, just taking a simple, very, very simple value of what a thousand square feet is worth. If you just took a $12 net lease with a 10% cap rate, and I don't want to get too crazy here, that's $120 a square foot. So for every five spaces you take away, you've lost $120,000 of real estate value. Or you have to replace the parking spaces another way. There's two ways to replace those spaces. You can build a surface lot or a surface law somewhere else, but that's surface, even a surface on your own property is gonna cost between $3 and $5,000 of paving, grading, electrical, and everything that goes with it. If you don't own the property and you have to buy property to replace that space, you can double that. Now you're up to about $10,000 of space for a surface lot. If you have to go search the parking, guess where the costs go? When you're literally $35,000 to $40,000 of space, not including land. So there's hidden costs in this proportionality that have to be taken into account. And again, I don't think our side has any problem with doing this, it's just that what's triggering what cost? Because in the end, and I'm speaking both for this project and other projects that have come up like this in town, if you do it wrong, if the proportionality becomes so onerous, or the cost to do this becomes so onerous, you basically have codified life, and potentially unsuitable tenants coming into properties because property owners simply can't afford to do it. So it's an important issue, it's not a simple issue, it's an important issue. Instead of, you gotta, you gotta be careful, you know, business owners, just try to maximize whatever they can get out of their existing building and avoid this process. Again, we're not trying to be argumentative, and I think we're willing to do something reasonable, but it's not a simple issue. And, you know, whenever these future phases that we develop, we'll be back in front of this board with a plan. And, you know, the current coast will apply, both sides of the street with sidewalks, connectivity issues will be important. We just can't deal with the entire sidewalk. And it's not a simple issue, and we're willing to come up with anything that's reasonable that doesn't just throw a complete roadblock to any type of future redevelopment, because I don't think it serves the community very well either, in the end.
But this is what we're talking about here, is master planning. I mean, that's really under the, that guy, so we're talking about master planning, and we're saying, as a body here, and I, you know, who knows where I'll be in 15 years, but we're saying now that we want to make sure, long term, that if there are improvements that need to be done or are done after these spheres of influence open up, that the property will be managed properly, that they will have the requirements, they'll be able to build what we, you know, to the master plan. And really, we as body are trying to make sure that we have enough dollars to do that. Now, I don't know where the $100,000 came from, that's, we'll let staff address that. But, you know, from a master plan perspective, I, I don't have an issue with the way it was laid out. I'd like to know that down the road, this is gonna be taken care of. If you have a plan, great, let's talk that through, and that's, and that's fine.
And I think we do have a plan, and I appreciate the planning commission's concern and, and, you know, it's part of your job to make sure that this, this works properly, not only now, but also in the future. But they signed the master plan, and what the owner's committing to is these future connectivity areas and concepts at the time of redevelopment occurs through the 20-year planning horizon. So we feel that we are making a commitment to create future connectivity by including this as part of our application. There's also a phasing plan, and I apologize, there's no slide for it, but it is an exhibit to my letter. You'll find it here with the future connectivity diagram. And that gives our approximate horizon as far as what we see the redevelopment looking like over time. So you take these two things together, and it paints a picture of the vision of how this redevelopment is going to occur. And it not only paints a picture of it, but we've created an extensive amount of pedestrian connection that you see with the black dotted lines, that not only doesn't prohibit future connectivity, but it really encourages and requires that. Obviously, we're building almost an entire street that's got pedestrian connections from Beaver Creek to, all the way to building G, which is a 25,000 square foot building, and it's a simple connection up through Bugattis to get all the way to Warner Milley. And we recognize that that would happen when the Bugatti sphere of influence came in for a land use application or a detailed development review. So even right now, in phase one, you've got this enormous amount of pedestrian connectivity, and that's something that will get built on, with this as a baseline. So this, I believe, gives the planning commission some assurances about what the future looks like. And you take that in combination with the fact that you are going to have future land use applications anytime that any of these buildings get touched, and it gives the planning commission what it needs to know that in the future, connectivity will continue to be enhanced and pedestrian safety will be adhered to. We are providing a significant amount of pedestrian safety just in phase one. Really, you will be able to walk almost throughout the entire site on sidewalks that are separated in a safe and effective manner from vehicular traffic, and that's really important. And we believe we've done a good job of that, and, you know, we've made site plan changes in the last two weeks and continue to enhance that. So the applicant's really, a lot of effort on that part, and are committed to doing that as the project moves forward. What are the other?
So you're right now suggesting just to delete condition of approval number three, and you're just saying, take our word for it, we're gonna build this, uh, this new connectivity.
Take our word for it. Just one question. Ideally, the applicant would like to have condition of approval number three removed, recognizing that might not be in the comfort zone of the planning commission. Alternatively, we would recommend a revision to condition of approval number three. And if you see in my letter in paragraph B on page four, we've provided some language. Before I walk through the language, actually, we did not expect that the planning commission would simply take our word for it, we're gonna do a good job, or, you know, we're a good applicant, we promise. But what we think creates some comfort and safety for the planning commission about the future is the combination of the master plan that's being approved today, including this future connectivity vision, combined with the fact that any future redevelopment is gonna go through a detailed development application and also have to get approval from this body. So if those two things in combination, it creates uncertainty on the future. But in the alternative, if the planning commission feels that additional language is needed, we've taken the condition of approval number three that, that staff has proposed and simply changed the trigger. We've left the language the same in the top, you know, relates to minimizing vehicular vacuum movements, separating vehicle and pedestrian access, providing the complete pedestrian connections on both sides of the road, and then trees and landscaping and compliance with the code. And rather than triggering that with the $100,000 worth of tenant improvements, which we discussed at length, causes us some serious concern about the future of the site, we would suggest that it's triggered when a detailed development plan, land use application comes in for something in each sphere of influence. That would, again, provide the planning commission with the ability to make these requirements. We're making a commitment through this language to provide all four of those items that are listed in staff's condition of approval, and this is really just a different way to trigger it that we think is more practical for the long-term future of the site and probably, most importantly, from the applicant's point of view, encourages redevelopment, encourages future leasing activity, and keeps this a viable option, both in the short term and long-term horizon of the master plan. Does that answer your question?
Just curious, what would be the difference in using the phasing chart as opposed to the spheres of influence?
This is a question, and actually, we talked about that, the phasing chart, now the phases, especially phase four, and I could go back to that. Really encompasses a lot of different potential redevelopments. You could have a large theater redevelopment that didn't really touch, say, Bugatti's. And vice versa, you could have a nice Bugatti's redevelopment, where you'd want to really capitalize on getting the sidewalks on both sides to Warner Milley, but where the theater hadn't been touched or changed. And so we wanted to give the ability to kind of grab more by each piece rather than one-on-one, because you didn't necessarily have a land use application for the theater when you went in for a Bugatti's application. Does that answer your question there? Yeah. So that was our thinking on the phase.
We don't have an overlay graphic of the spheres of influence is on phases, do we? Or that is on a?
I think we're actually, oops.
Can we, can we see that?
If I, I can walk you through it, if you look at this one, so the green in the upper left-hand corner, the green is phase four. And, I'll give my best, for your help here. Phase one, B, which is how the applicant, but we call it also phase one, is the yellow down in the left-hand corner, where Mark's got the pointer, I did a minute ago. There it is. That's phase one. Phase two is the fuel pad, which is the light blue. And then phase three is the US Bank corner in the orange there. I actually took the phase labeling off because I thought it got a little bit confusing on, on top of the spheres of influence, but it does help to have the colors consistent. So that's what we would suggest as a way to deal with the issue in a way that hopefully meets staff and planning commission concerns, and also really protects the ability for future redevelopment for the applicant. That concludes our prepared remarks, we'd be happy to talk about anything else. We request that the planning commission consider this and make a decision tonight in approval of the application with the condition revised as we've, as we've proposed. As you know, the applicant is very anxious to get meeting with the redevelopment project, they're, they're ready to go, and time is money, as we all know, and we've been looking forward to a decision on this application for a while, so.
All right.
Any other questions?
Any other questions at this time of the afternoon?
Oh, I've got a question, but I'm not sure if it's to the applicant or to Pete. Has to do, do you have your diagram with the connectivity? Can you go back to that?
There you go.
I guess my question, and I'll just throw this out, and if it's a question that Pete needs to respond to, we could go that way. But the sense I'm getting, from what I'm hearing from the other commissioners, is that we're anxious to see the connectivity achieved, but absent a plan that shows us how that's gonna be accomplished, there's some reservation about that. And I, my thought was the red line that's connecting from the four-way intersection in the parking lot to Warner Milley Road is essentially wiping out a whole row of parking along that whole aisle. Is it feasible that that red line of connectivity could be shifted over to split, in other words, be between the two rows of parking and not adjacent to the street? So that there would not necessarily be a loss of parking spaces, but you still have that continuous federal on.
I believe it's feasible, as long as there is a north-south pedestrian access that is the main one that would be used by pedestrians, and it's clear that that's the one that people would use in order to travel north and south.
The reason I ask you, you know, I think Mark's point about reorienting it.
We just wanna qualify it, you know, we would want to minimize pedestrian vehicle conflicts with that design.
Mark's point about having to reorient the whole parking lot makes a lot of sense, but it would be nice if we had a dedicated place where that connectivity could be achieved. And it seems like that may be a way of striking the balance where you get the connectivity without losing all those parking spaces.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to study the geometry to see what, what's, parking spaces will be left when we put a sidewalk. I think that's the right idea to explore. That, that does address several issues, and I think Pete's concern about the pedestrian traffic conflict is really kind of minimal, I mean, because you're only crossing parking aisles and parking spaces, yeah. I think that's a great solution, if it's feasible, if the geometry allows it to happen.
I, I'm just getting the sense the other commissioners are having a reservation about that issue, and it sounds like just eliminating the condition of approval is kind of, just begging the question.
And, you know, we recognize that, and it's why we also came with, you know, a revised condition of approval, wanted to talk about different potential ways to solve the problem, and we've worked with staff on a lot of problems on this, and we've been able to solve all of them, and it's sort of the last piece of the puzzle.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Tony, do you have some, some difference?
Chair Powell and, and commissioners, my name is William Dukert, and I live in Oregon City. And I have two presentations to make, one is with my land use chair for the Hillendale Neighborhood Association hat, and the other is just as a private citizen. The reason that that has to be split in two is because, I think the phrase.
You're always reading yourself?
No, the phrase used was a fluid design, and indeed, this has been a fluid design, and we did not receive a copy, the neighborhood did not receive a copy of the latest design changes. And actually, because of some other things, I didn't even get the email, I didn't even see the email. I, I got your email this afternoon, Pete, and then I looked back and found that the other email was not sent by you, and I was looking for an email from you, and it's sent by Laura, and I wasn't looking for that. And in, in short, we haven't had a chance to look at this, and it was only, and it wasn't mailed to us, so all we had was a 90-page PDF file, and scanning 90 pages of PDF, I mean, thanks, I'd just rather have the hard copy. So, so we're not prepared, really, to, to make comments on that, on, on the, on some of the newer plans. So with my, with my land use chair hat on, however, I can make a couple of comments regarding previous testimony that we have given. One is the, we wanted to reiterate our concern about the trees, and it was a very interesting analysis by the, by the applicant's landscape architect. It's, we didn't, we didn't, the neighborhood didn't raise so much the issue of edible landscaping generally around the place. We, I think we had addressed really the, the little community garden that is there now. I don't know what the little liability on that is, I don't know if any, you know, poisonous plants have been out there menacing the neighborhood, but that was our original comment. The, the rest of it, I just thought that was an interesting analysis. We, we had talked about reusing some of the trees there, and our first option was leave as many trees in place as possible. And one of the concerns that we had specifically was the strip between the applicant's property and Walgreens. The concern there was not because of a tree-huggy, greeny issue at all, but more the value of the mature landscaping. But we appreciate the larger trees in that, in that island along there. When I looked at the packet that was available on the back shelf, the last two pages of that had two maps of that area, which aren't exactly the same, I mean, there's some discrepancies, and I'm looking at, but it's very, very tiny to see the, the area that we're trying to address here, where now there is a sidewalk going straight through there. So I'm presuming that they're taking out that entire strip of mature trees. The, the two maps aren't exactly the same, I guess, but the last one has a little more blown up area, and there seems to be a little island sticking out, looks as though they've gotten rid of the diagonal parking. We haven't had a chance to talk about this, we've got rid of the diagonal parking, and there seems to be some little bubble out island there, I'm not exactly sure what that is, if that's left over from the existing island, or... Can you see what I'm talking about?
Uh huh.
There's a bump here. I don't know what that bump is for, or is it a remnant of the existing island? Will the trees be left in there along the sidewalk there? That would be pretty nice, I mean, it looks like they took out half of the island instead of all of it. I just don't exactly understand how that configuration is going, is... I guess this is not enough specificity for, for us to understand what that plan is. And they're different on both of those maps. I noticed that the date is different also, one of them is dated October 28th, and the other is dated October 27th, so that's fluid. So that's, that's a little bit about the tree concerns. Uh, another area that we had a concern about was the parking space width. And I was looking at page 35. Again, this is the first time I've had a chance to look at this and it's hard to scan 100 pages and just go over an hour and, uh, and make any detailed analysis of this. But the, um, stall widths of eight and a half feet, or in some cases only eight feet, regardless of the angle of, uh, attack of the vehicle. It's not very wide. I mean, to park a car in an area about the size of that table just seems really tight. And I understand that they're trying to accommodate a larger number of, of vehicles. But we had raised the issue of the width of the parking spaces before. The widths of the, the width of the parking spaces, just because I measured them myself in front of the existing, um, Danielson's fresh marketplace. Right now are 10 feet. They're very nice and that's at 90 degrees. They're very comfortable. Uh, they're proposing here nine feet and eight feet for compacts. We raised the issue that that's tight squeaking. That's tight squeaking. And given the recent information about redoing a, a parking lot, we'd really like to have this done right the first time or as, as good as we can get it. So the parking space, uh, space width is another issue. Also on page 61, this whole issue, uh, and we raised this issue before and it looks as if they, oh, oh, I should have prefaced these comments. The neighborhood is really excited, just, just shy, dashing with enthusiasm. We really want to see this development happening as soon as possible. And we would certainly like some decisions made as, as soon as possible. And we very much appreciate the improvements that have been made on the designs thus far. On page 61, it talks about that the, uh, the roof should include at least two of the following features and there's A3D. But all I heard was the overhang. Is there another, what was I missing? What was the second one? At least two of them.
The parapet?
The parapet. So there will be some roof articulation.
Okay.
That's dandy. Okay, I'm sorry. I guess I just didn't hear that part of it. Um, oh, and there is one other issue that we had raised before regarding plants. But we had, um, we had specifically indicated that we would, we would really like drought resistant landscaping. Uh, drought resistant, meaning the current landscape as you understand right now requires no watering, which I think is a big savings for the city. Not just less money for the applicant to have to, uh, to have to water those plants. But I would love to see, other neighborhood would love to see the plantings be put in there that don't require water, watering. If they dip around in the summer, in the wintertime, that's fine. That's what plants do. Um, and I think that's it for my land use hat. As a citizen, I had some observations. And you have raised the issue of the sidewalk on the west side of the building, on the east side of that street. Specifically the one that goes right by the, um, the loading dock. And in some of the previous plans, again, in this fluid process, some of the previous plans, they showed that two trees being in tree wells at the end of that, at the end of that sidewalk, just before the intersection. Looking at this drawing, if the, the architects were kind enough to, although they look a little cartoonish because the, the trees are coming directly out of the pavement with no tree wells around them at all. Um, and I understand it's just a sketch. But we have to assume that there's going to be some sort of a tree well there. And I also noticed how low those branches are. And one of my crucial concerns was the visibility at that intersection. If there's going to be trees right up to the end of that, uh, at the end of that sidewalk, I would want to make sure that there's enough visibility around the corner when those, especially since we're trying to encourage pedestrian access there. So I don't know how those are going to be. Again, I understand these are just sketches, but the branches look mighty low to me to provide the best visibility for, for vehicular traffic versus pedestrian traffic. I think the point is made on that. And, and I know that pictures is worth a thousand words, but they can also be a little misleading. And I'm not, I would, I would certainly like to have seen, if we're just going to do a drawing there, two shopping carts, you know, or a wheelchair and, you know, or a bicycle or something casting each other on this. Because I, I don't know exactly what the width on that sidewalk is, but I would sure want it to be room enough that a person on a bicycle, a person on a shopping cart could cast each other. That's all I wanted to say about that sidewalk. Page 53 in this 100-page document. I think it was, I remember page 53. Oh, talks about, um, no, I guess it's another page. I'm sorry for the reference. But near the, um, bus stop, the, the little stop that there is now, and I'm sorry that Finesse isn't more cooperative what they want. It could be more clear and help these folks along. Um, but their plans to be a, um, I don't know the technical word, so please help me, gravel pathway up to the plaza. My concern about gravel pathways is the maintenance of them. And it seems to me the only way that you can maintain a gravel pathway is with, um, is with, um, Roundup or, you know, Agent Orange or something to get in there and make sure there aren't any weeds in there. Personally, I would rather see something that's, that doesn't take as much toxic maintenance, because I can't imagine hiring people to go out there and pull weeds up out of a gravel, uh, walkway. And I'm not sure what the purpose of a gravel walkway is and pedestrians just kick that gravel all over the place anyway. Uh, and bicycles can't ride on it and, and so on. So I would just personally like to see against the gravel walkway there. Uh, Chair Powell mentioned the possibility of raised parking, uh, or raised traffic deterrents as opposed to stop signs. If we can't get stop signs in, in front of each of those things. And I think the applicant has mentioned something about different texture of, of that. And I just want, I would certainly like the applicant to consider the possibility of cobblestones. Seems to me like that would be a dam- dandy application to, uh, to put in cobblestones that I think are aesthetically pleasing and can, uh, can, uh, what's the word? Soften traffic. What's the word? Calming, thank you. Calm, calming words. Um, I have one other, oh, I had another comment about that, the wall that they're talking about transparent windows that you don't want to see through anyway. And I'm just thinking of the brilliant examples that we have right across the street up here at the Cinderhill Garden for Vertical Gardens. Vertical gardens would be pretty nice. I mean, if I was going to a restaurant over there, I'd much rather look over there and see a, a vertical garden. Just some plants along that wall rather than just some, um, some fake windows. Uh, the last comment that I had was regarding the red line. I think that Commissioner Kibbola had a brilliant idea about possibly integrating the, the walkway into the parking lot rather than along the outside of it. And I understand the issues of backing up the traffic and so on, or the traffic backing up into the thoroughfare. But, uh, and maybe it could be moved in the middle of that. I guess what I would like to think is that when I look at this site, the very first thing that comes to me is it's an awful lot of straight lines. Um, I have, I have one neighbor that defines that east-west passageway from, from Warner Mel- uh, from, from Moala over to the, to the theater as a landing strip. It's, it's a really straight shot. And straight shots to me encourage speed. And I think to other people as well. And in, in the same token, if you're talking about that red line being moved a little bit, it could, it could meander a little bit. If it, if it went over a little bit into the middle of the theater's parking lot to split two lanes and then wander back out. I'd have no problem at all with, with meandering sidewalks, meandering, streets are nice too, so. I'd be happy to answer the questions you have.
Okay. Any questions? All set.
For your attention.
Thank you. That's it? Uh, do we have anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak? Uh, for, against, or?
Chair Powell? Oh, we have another comment?
Yeah, let's, let's hear that and then we'll move forward. That's okay. And you brought no food.
Hello, uh, my name is Lydia Bugatti. I own Bugattis at the end of the parking lot. What I'm understanding is that this site plan is balancing many, many requirements by the tenants of the shopping center. And at the same time, trying to balance the city's, uh, requirements for construction for building. The, uh, the orientation that I'm seeing, uh, if I understand it right, the city's orientation is that they want businesses to face the streets. But this shopping center, it seems to me that is, is primarily a auto access area. I mean, you don't have a, a large amount of foot traffic around this particular shopping center. So, and honestly, I think the way that they presented it in their developing that south side, it looks beautiful at, from the street. If you're driving by, you get a sense of business. You get businesses, smaller businesses, shops that feel accessible facing the street. And when you get into the shopping center itself, you have more shops facing it. And what I also like is, again, the access that Bugatti has, uh, it, I was, I feel included with the plan development as it is at the moment. It's safer where to face Eber Creek with its back to the shopping center itself. I, 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 it just doesn't sound very appealing, you know? So val- balancing the, the tenants and what the city needs and it just, it seems that they've found a solution to a very difficult problem. The, the red line, I don't know how you guys are going to figure this out, but I'm looking forward to seeing it. But I have to admit, I also, today was the first day I heard of how they were planning on satisfying the different phases of the development. And I like the fact that instead of, instead of taking everything that's going to happen over the next 10, 20 years and deciding it with this on plan, they're going to work on that south side. And then when, when the next phase of development comes in, they're going to come here and say, okay, this is what we're looking at. This is what we had talked about. This is what's been happening lately. And, uh, and it's, it keeps it current. And it also keeps this committee, the impact of the committee, able to deal with current issues. You know, so at, at that point, if we're having a corner where is then people are going too fast, at that point, the committee can also say, well, you know, if this, we're seeing this issue or this is happening. Or the neighborhood association, you can address the problem at that point. I like the way they set that up. I actually hadn't heard that before tonight. You know, it, uh, it makes a lot of sense to me. But anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you very much for letting me, uh, speak.
You bet. Thank you. Thanks for your.
Mr. Come on up. Excuse me, commissioners, uh, Ms. Bugatti just reminded me of one of the points that I had written down, but I forgot to mention. And that is a reminder that the neighborhood has submitted a record, uh, no, on record, the, uh, the, uh, approval of the, or, uh, I mean, the neighborhood's concern about orienting the grocery store towards the parking lot. But what occurred to me tonight was that actually kills another bird with the same stone in the fact that if code calls for parking to be in front of major business, hey, and the front, front is facing north, you've got parking in front of the building. Good, huh?
Yeah, for the record, that was Mr. Diford again. All right. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak for, against, or either, or neither?
Okay. Wait, wait, before we do that. So I've, I've actually got a question that Mr. Diford, he advocated that he hasn't had enough time to see everything. And I'm not sure what that means.
Are you going to ask the question?
Yeah.
Oh, then have him come back up and we'll do that.
That's what it means is that I can't reply for the neighborhood, having not reviewed it myself and discussed it with the neighbors. So personally, I'm okay with it. But again, I haven't looked in detail at all, all 100 pages of whatever changes there might have been made. And when I, when I see discrepancies in maps like that, you know, and I know with the fluid process and I'm very pleased with the changes that have been made so far. I just have a little bit of discomfort in not having had a chance to review it and present it to the neighborhood and ask them, you know? And we would just have a, a, as a steering committee. I mean, we wouldn't have to call the whole neighborhood together, but I'm torn with that and the fact that the expediency of hurting up and getting this through, and I really want to get it done. So I guess I don't want to make an issue out of it. I just want to make a note that if there was something that came up, I couldn't be responsible for it.
Well, this will need the time to do it though. I mean.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I can't do it.
This isn't the, this isn't the first public hearing. So if you would like, i- if this were the first public hearing, you could request a continuance. And when the audience would be automatically granted.
Absolutely not. I'm not asking for a continuance.
Okay. Okay, we'll get that.
Okay.
I just didn't know what you, where, where the neighborhood association stood exactly.
Neither does the neighborhood association because of your.
Who had the chances though to?
Yeah. And, and what we're understanding is that this is the master plan and that there's going to be further, further detail, uh, uh, opportunities that we can discuss smaller pieces of it. But insofar as the whole overall master plan, I don't think there's going to be anything that's going to be obstructing it. So we'll give it a ni-ho, hop stop.
Okay, very good.
Thanks.
All right, Chair Powell, our staff is prepared to provide some clarification on the applicant's requests for changes and deletions to the conditions of approval. I can speak to conditions of approval six and seven. Let me see here. Which have to do with the stormwater. And also to conditions of approval 10, 21, 23, and 25.
Okay, and you want to do that before rebuttal?
Um, it's up to the.
I, I didn't have a chance to talk about it, so.
Uh, if the applicant requests for the clarification on the stormwater grading and design standards, those standards are adopt, uh, sorry, adopted by resolution, this is the commission. So there's a separate specification manual that deals with stormwater design standards and it's under chapter 13.12 of City Code. Uh, so by all means, we can provide greater specificity that provides that cer- that code citation. However, I would recommend that we keep the condition of approval in. And just amend it. Because typically what happens is the construction plans are reviewed following the site plan and design review approval by planning commission. And the development services engineers look at that manual and make sure that it complies with those. With respect to condition of approval 10, which has to do with roofline articulation, the standard allows a choice of, um, four different types of roofline details. And, uh, the condition was written to provide some, some flexibility. There's an interpretation needed here from the commission because one of the standards that the applicant is choosing is the overhang of three feet. Code does not specify whether that overhang is seen horizontally as you look straight out of a building or straight out over vertically as you're standing, looking at a building this way. So some of the roofline articulation is proposed, doesn't be three feet that way, but it does need to choose the, you know, hor- horizontally over, overhang that way. So from certain angles, certainly it, it complies with that, with that code section. Um, and could be used to satisfy the standard. The additional, uh, articulations provided in the form of capes, which are not necessarily roofline features. And screening wall, truck bays and things of that nature also requires some interpretation by the planning commission to ensure that if you feel they meet that standard. If you don't feel they meet that standard and that the actual grocery store main building roofline, which is higher than the adjacent retail by about, oh, four or five feet, say, if that roofline. if that roofline modulation does not meet the standard, then you should require that that specific roofline be be modulated the same way. Steph is comfortable with the retail roofline articulation meeting the standard. Let's see, condition of approval, the remaining conditions of approval have been met. Twenty-one, twenty-three, and twenty-five. So we're supportive of those being struck.
I'd like to make a few comments about
Please.
I worked with staff draft the revised version, and there were two sort of needs and swag we drafted that way. We drafted it that way because we wanted to allow the applicant an opportunity to put the piece, pub, public pieces together in a different order. In other words, let's say Bugatti stops being a restaurant and becomes something entirely different. But maybe that's a triggers headband designer view, but maybe triggers some internal improvements anyway, and that's an opportunity for us to get those sidewalks without having the applicant have to come back and modify the master plan. So there's a little flex, there's an, there's an opportunity coming early, in other words. A hundred thousand dollars we started picking up because we kind of knew that the sidewalk costs would be fifteen thousand dollars, about. So we thought that was not, without a fair trigger. We are open to changing that. I think the seating Portland threshold is a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
That's correct.
The second part of this was trying to put in, what happens if the fourth phase never happens? What happens if it doesn't get, what happens if it doesn't occur? What happens if the theater doesn't get developed? If you look at the applicant's comments, she says the most significant tenant agreement that limits current use is the theater. And that piece with options runs well past the twenty-year master plan period. Our master plan's only good for twenty years. The twenty-first year, we're sort of back at the start. And what we're concerned with is, we could say, okay, you don't need to provide the connectivity now, do it when you come with the leases, but we may never get that other side. And I'd just like to bring the commission back to the sort of criteria, there are seating adjustments to a number of the building access connectivity standards. And if you look at, they, they talk about the obligation to mitigate. They say mitigation is provided by additional public amenities in the area as well as internal private street grid, which provides for an urban pedestrian oriented street grid throughout the site. Well, we won't necessarily get it throughout the site until fifteen years, eighteen years, twenty years out. It may be okay. But it may not be okay if mitigation for these adjustments is is necessary. So that's what we were trying to balance from staff's perspective. There are some psychos in this proposed condition that need work to. That we can work on to, if you want to get that part into it.
No. I was just going to say that concerning parking lots, stall, stall, those are right out of the code. There's concerns about eight for the ninth, which is probably looking at ending the code. But that's, it can apply exactly with what are required.
Just talking about condition three, can we have another, I wanted to, I have a couple things. One, in other master plans, and our master planning process is not, is relatively in its infancy. We just got it in our new code we've written in this body, so I'm just curious, do we have any examples of, of this type of requirement? Of this hundred thirty-five or a hundred thousand or whatever dollar? Or do we treat each, as a master plan, do we treat each each piece of that master plan as a separate application? As they may suggest here? Do we have any reference to that?
No, I think what's different here is the leases really make it difficult to try and come up with a legitimate phasing schedule. Because most of the, or most of the concept plans that we've done have either been public or public-private partnerships. So we had some control on the finding of when those improvements would go in, and most of them were vacant lands. Or the college or the campus, like Mississauga College Campus, where with certain buildings, they, they, they were bringing in parking lots and upgrading pedestrian walkways and whatnot. So this is, this is somewhat unique and trying to deal with an unknown lease date of when an improvement may or may not happen.
But this is the county master plan. Part of the Beaver Creek reconstruction was part of that phase. And I guess that's my thought is, if we don't want to put this hundred thousand dollar trigger on that, do we, do we, do we require it at each phase, a percentage of that at each phase? And it, I don't know.
Being a site plan, an improvement to the exterior of the building.
Or, or when there's a site plan, it would be right.
So it'd be a land use action rather than a tenant improvement.
Right.
That's exactly what you do, and for that, like I stated earlier, you're kind of looking at these phases as almost individual properties. And so during, on that, that phase, whatever, whatever it may be, whether it be Bugatti's or the theater or the old, you know, paint shop, then that improvement would be provided along that frontage with the site plan.
With the site plan, right.
You're discussing, correct.
Yes, and that makes, and that makes sense to me. I mean, that's, that's, that makes sense at the land use that I'm comfortable with, that would make sense.
That of the tenant improvement.
Correct. That's, that's kind of nebulous to me, and I'm, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a lot comfortable with that than I am with the hedges, obviously.
Sure.
So I guess that's something I'd like to have a little more discussion on and see if that fits, if I can see kind of woven in to this number three and see if that makes sense.
I guess we still, we still have the, the final presentation from the applicant.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll address some of that as well.
Right, and we, and to, to the attorney's discussion about that, we may never get it. I, I, I mean, we do have it in there because within fifteen years, it, it has to be, you know, well, I'm not sure what the terminology was, but no later than fifteen years. So how are we controlling that? And that's, that's the third question. You know, let's say in fifteen years, we come in and say, well, it needs to be done. This is, this is the way it's got to go. It's got to be done. This, this, these intersections are have to be done. The sidewalks have to put in. You know, what controls we have that with that. I mean, I want to, I, I think it makes sense to treat each one of these as an individual piece. I, it just makes sense to me. But I also want to make sure that we can fit these, that we can get a completed package at the end of it. And we don't have a bunch of, as I said earlier, that we don't have a bunch of unfinished pieces that never tie together.
And I think, you know, from the applicant's standpoint, what they're trying to tell you is that that's almost, it's, it's very difficult to guarantee or put a timeline on at this point. You know, realistically, in fifteen years, the site's developed, the site's redeveloped in certain places, and we have a connection. Or pieces of it have developed, and we have portions of it, or we're potentially in here amending that condition of approval.
Right.
Those are realistically probably the, the options that you would see.
But I want also off the flex there, because I also understand that in ten years, we may be watching movies on the backs of our glasses, you know, and not going to theaters. So there may not be theaters, so.
But then the theater would come in.
Correct, at that point, and then, then it would be controlled. So, but I, I appreciate that we're trying to, we're, we're working to build this accessibility. It's, it's, I just, I don't know, it just didn't make sense to do it at the land use in my mind that it does a tenant improvement. You guys can vary in as you want on that, but. All right. Okay. So any other comments at this moment? Before we let the applicant come back up and rebut all of our comments? Come on.
I think I'll start where we are talking now with condition of approval three, and then I'll move on to some of the other smaller items that were raised by our testimony. I'd like to start with the applicant's view of the adjustments and how they're mitigated by the improvements provided in the detailed development plan. The applicant's application provides the mitigation for all the adjustments, which we sort of call them the orientation adjustments. I recognize there are six of them. They all relate to basically the same issue. Is the internal street grid that's part of the detailed development plan and the connectivity that we're going to provide right away. The future connectivity that we're talking about is not necessary to mitigate the adjustments, in the applicant's opinion, that we're asking for. Those are really mitigated by the internal street grid that's going to be effective and very active from a pedestrian urban orientation. Would it be helpful if I put the picture back up or? I'll let Mark work on that. So our, our concept on the master plan future connectivity isn't as it relates to the adjustments specifically, but as it relates to future connectivity, something that you might look towards for the applicant's vision as the, as the site redevelops. And we agree completely with you, Chair Powell. We think a land use application is, is the right trigger for that. At the time that each of those buildings come in for redevelopment, we'll make those connectivity upgrades. We'll upgrade the parking lots. We'll do that activity. And tenant improvement is just, it's a very difficult thing to deal with, and we would much prefer to deal with it as we suggest for the land use application. The only issue we have with the remaining language is the fifteen-year mark. And as, I didn't talk about it a lot when I talked about it, but our revised proposal language doesn't include that. One of the main reasons is, as Tony talked about and others have, we have an existing lease agreement that does not allow us to touch a large portion of that parking lot. The earliest we could touch it would be in seven, year seventeen of the master plan. But again, that doesn't take into account lease options that could go on. We could still be concluded from touching it or making revisions. We're talking about such a long period of time. We don't know, as you say, what movie theaters might be like then. You know, we know we don't have the square footage for the type of movie theaters we're building today, but you know, what that might look like in the future is really hard to say. So we want to create some flexibility there, and we really appreciate SASS working with us on that issue, and I think we just haven't come up with the right idea quite yet. And we would say that the end of the twenty years is when you would look to see those future connections, and if they're not there, obviously, the master plan expires, and you're looking at a whole another sort of larger bite at the apple when redevelopment does occur. I know it's not a perfect answer, but given the site constraints and the unique nature of this, it's the best that we could come up with. And I I appreciate the idea of looking at other examples. It's interesting, yeah, we came in voluntarily for a master plan application. This isn't typically the type of master plan application that you've seen in Oregon City, or, but at least Mark and I have worked on in other jurisdictions. It's very difficult because of the site constraints and the existing tenant. So I think Lydia Bugatti said it really well. We're balancing a whole bunch of stuff here, and, you know, this is the applicant's best way to move forward, give you some assurances, know you've got that land use trigger, but also respect the existing tenant obligations. Make sure anybody else here can do some approval number three. I don't know if you want to ask us any questions on that.
Yeah, I'd agree with the, with PC just in sixty-seven. And I am, just so we're clear, a little bit alike, I am not an architect. But I believe some of the items related to your number ten have to do with the issue of a cornice versus an eve. Am I right, Dean?
I better read the code section so they understand what the options are.
I believe you have an exhibit that was on there, and I apologize if you don't know the exhibit number. Is that on the dais?
It is on the dais. It should, oh. The exhibit thirty-three. And the narrative that goes with it is exhibit twenty-nine. And the code section. One moment. The code section is a seventeen point six, two point oh five six D one, and it reads, roofs shall include at least two of the following features. A, parapets concealing flat roofs and rooftop equipment from public view. The average height of such parapets shall not exceed fifteen percent of the height of the supporting wall. And such parapets shall not at any point exceed one-third of the height of the supporting wall. Such parapets shall feature three-dimensional cornice treatment. And cornice is not defined in the development code. A lot of the architectural terms have not yet been defined in the development code here. B, overhanging eaves extending no less than three feet past the supporting walls. You notice on the majority of the elevations, the eaves that are shown are between one and a half and two and a half. That says you're looking on two dimensionally at the elevation. It doesn't reflect the overhangs that are shown on the retail that actually extend out towards the viewer. C, sloping roofs that do not exceed the average height of the supporting walls with an average slope greater than or equal to one foot vertical rise for every three feet of horizontal run and less than or equal to one foot vertical rise for every one foot of horizontal run. The north elevation, which includes the sloping roofs, rooflines, certainly meets that standard. And to a certain extent, I believe the south Beaver Creek Road elevation has some roof sloping roofs that would meet that requirement as well. The east and the west side would have to rely instead on the parapet and eve and screening wall for the necessary modulation. Finally, three or more roof planes. North elevation has three or more roof planes, roof planes. The other elevations do not.
We suggested removal of condition of approval ten because we submitted additional information and feel we need it. You know, we don't really have an issue with needing it. We believe that we do. So if, you know, if removal of that condition becomes problematic, now that's something we can certainly deal with.
Well, I think it's just a, I, I think it's, it's in there so that we have the, we want to go through a design review, that that's something that's reviewed. I, I don't see an issue with it, and if you don't have a problem with that, I'd say either.
Okay. I think I'll go back now and walk through Mr. Gifford's test one, the ones he raised, and just respond to those. The first question he raises is a bump out on, do you remember? Is it closer, a bigger master plan? Okay. So on this small south street, there is a bump out here, and just to be clear, this landscaping that we added so we can continue to meet the landscape requirements while also adding both the sidewalk connections. On the parking
I wonder if further up, if we were to move north, that, that, that right there.
Right there.
Is that, what is that?
Well, I'll tell you, there's a parallel parking along that road, and it's just the extension of sidewalk, yeah, bump out.
For parking, okay.
Yeah. Because it contains those stalls on the interior. The parking width of the stalls, as Tony mentioned in the code, that they're actually nine feet in this field right here. So it might alleviate some concerns regarding the width of the stalls. The comment about drought-resistant planting, so the applicant did look at that. They enjoy their drought-resistant landscaping that they have now, but we were unable to balance the landscape code requirements with that type of planting, so we went ahead and adhered to all the landscape requirements in the code. The common visibility on the trees, you know, they're just perspectives. And the trees will all be maintained according to the code requirements for street trees. So we anticipate, you know, that they'll all be appropriate for visibility, and that's, that's how those street tree requirements are, are written, and we'll, we'll adhere to those.
But I believe on the landscaping plan, there is a note that says it'll be fifteen feet from intersections, like pulled right out of our code. Yeah.
Yeah, they, they do look a little low here, but it's, it's just to give you a sense of, of the, the area. On the sidewalk width here, there are eight-foot wide sidewalks, so very large, you know, generous sidewalk, plenty of room for traffic in both directions.
And are the wells that those trees in, are they, are they perforated wells or?
Again, this was put together meant to simulate the The other note, too, is that if you look at the top one and the one on the wall, those are prollises that will have plantings on them.
Right.
So we do have an element of vertical landscaping on the wall, and we had to balance that with need for the sort of faux transparency requirement. So, you know, we're happy that we're able to get a variety of elements in there, make a more pleasant atmosphere. The question on the decomposed, or the gravel pathway, it's actually decomposed granite. I think we may have missed I think we may have misspoke earlier about that. Um, our landscape architecture shows this is an easy to maintain and attractive way to do a path in that natural landscape area.
So it's engineered with a landscape fabric and.
Confided in all sides.
Right, right.
It's not just somebody laying a bunch of gravel.
I will not be doing the gravel, yeah.
Yeah, like in my house.
You can compact it also. Decomposed granite, compacted.
So there are engineering drawings, show how that's constructed. Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, one comment on the question about traffic calming, um, that Mr. Griffith raised and I think, um, I'm going to be sure everyone is really well aware. There is one raised crossing and that is right here, direct mark. So this is a raised crossing, this will calm traffic that comes right off Malala. Um, the concept of, of puddles or other, um, ways to articulate these crossings becomes difficult for ADA access issues. And so we use what we can in terms of, uh, circumstance elements, but to do something more causes some other problems. So as you heard, Chris Frimer testified, you know, the combination of the raised element here, um, the mind to avoid that rolling stop scenario, which really is more problematic. And then the articulation, this really creates the best possible scenario for, for calming traffic in this area. And we believe it's very safe. Um, just one little comment on, on the changes since the last hearing. The changes are really fairly minor. They relate to the, the sidewalks, which are, um, now in place on either edge of the parking lot. Can't see them all in this drive, but you can, you know, you know that they're here and here. Um, and there really are no significant changes. And everything has been available on the website as well. And we appreciate that no one's asking for continuance at this point. And I, I think that's it unless you want to circle back and talk anymore about the conditions of approval. I know they're complicated issues and we got a lot of information tonight on those. So we'd be happy to talk more about that if, if you wish you'd like.
Well, I think, I think we need to talk a little bit about it and kind of get some thoughts going and then if we need to have discussion, we can have staff do that.
All right, thank you.
I concur. I think your land, your idea of the land use sink is a better proportionality and a better place to control the designs that are happening on the site than it is with the C I code.
Thanks. Yeah. Any other comments of applicant one or three?
Okay.
There you go. Thank you very much. All right, at this time I'm going to close the public hearing. And, uh, we will bring it up for discussion with the client commission or a decision. I think we should probably talk about condition of approval three. Uh, that's one of the notes I've made. Um, we, I think we pretty much knocked down the other condition of approval. Like everybody agrees it's what we're going to be doing there. And I guess we could talk about, in your, in your discussion, we can talk about any other issues you have. Um, so conditions of approval three, I think we've knocked through that. If we can do that now and then we can take the opportunity to everybody to discuss it and decide what we want to do. Um, you kind of heard my thoughts. I, I think, uh, it, it makes sense to do it as a, as a land use, uh, application and at, at each, uh, at each requirement. We have a master plan, we have an idea, we have a design. The, the document we got from the applicant shows that concept, that they get it. You know, that's what we're trying to accomplish here. So I guess my thought is how do we integrate that into a revised recommendation or revised condition, uh, of approval?
Can I ask one, or a follow-up question that goes with the, the land use application trigger? Which is, are you going to do a total cost of improvement along with that land use application trigger? Or is it any land use application triggers the upgrade in that sphere influence?
I think that's, my opinion, I think that sphere of influence, I think there should be a cost associated with that improvement. So that when it comes to this body, then we can discuss that and say, okay, if this is approved, then we're going to get this percentage of that development fix or that piece.
So are you suggesting that there would be other land use applications that would not be a detailed development plan that's part of this master plan, this concept plan? Is that fundamentally the basis of your question? Or could that happen in fact?
It's, we're either going to see building improvements that don't trigger minor, uh, site plan. We would either have a minor site plan, which would be, uh, walkways, exterior building coverings and things of that nature. And then additions up to a thousand square feet. Anything more than that would trigger a site plan review or detailed development plan. And the applicant's proposal states that their trigger that they would like to see is that those improvements required pursuant to this condition shall be triggered for each sphere of influence when the building in the sphere of influence submits for detailed development plan land use application pursuant to this master plan approval. I think we would probably want to broaden that slightly to say land use, any land use approval within that sphere of influence.
But what if, uh, but for instance, what if, um, Bugatti wants to add a, a shed that's, that's over a thousand feet, just just over a thousand feet and, and over, or, or right out of thousands or something like that, where they wouldn't necessarily have to come for this type of, of update.
They would have to submit a site plan and design review application and I believe, um, we would have to review it pursuant to the master plan, um, condition.
Well, I know what I want, I just don't know how.
You want a higher threshold.
Yeah.
Right? Are we hearing that correctly?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Um, a, a, a higher threshold, but. Uh, yeah, I think that's probably a fair statement. I don't necessarily want it, I don't want, I don't think it should be.
You don't think of a, a minor site plan.
A facade change, yeah. I mean, I don't think that should turn it off. I think it's, there should be a redevelopment or something that's going to cause that to. Even for value, I mean, it's, it's.
So a, so a detailed development plan, that would, that would.
Trigger it.
Trigger it.
Yeah. And what, tell me what's wrong with that? Is that, is that a bad idea? Is that a good idea? I mean.
That sounds like the right one.
I, I think it makes sense.
This is a great threshold right now.
Tony?
Well, what, what level of redevelopment could go on, on, on this property within the confines of this concept plan space? That would not have to apply for a detailed development plan? I mean, huh?
With minor site plan, less than a thousand square feet, aesthetic improvements.
Okay, yeah.
Pretty minor.
Okay. So detailed development.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Uh, I, I, I think I concur with you and if you did want to tie a dollar value to it, I, I would suggest a higher dollar value. I think, um, he mentioned the city quarter was a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So a higher dollar value might be appropriate, but I, I, I agree with you on the, the site.
Detailed development.
Yeah, development plan.
Yeah, I think that makes more sense. Try to get into the, it's the dollar.
The problem with the dollar amount is that in fifteen years, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars is half of what it is today.
Or a hundred times.
A hundred times.
Okay, so, so can we craft something where we can have a discussion and maybe see if that.
So to be consistent with what the applicant requested? And are we going to drop part two, the kind of said, um, putting up? It shall be installed within fifteen years or seventeen years or twenty years. Are we going to leave that off and just wait until development comes in?
Well, that's a good question. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how to best answer that. And I, clearly we want to put that, our, our, our math for those twelve years. I mean, I said, I mean, mapping up, we, we have some sort of review before that file is built. I don't know how to do it. You know, I just don't know how to do that. I mean, maybe we say twenty years or, I, I don't know, I don't know.
Or it might still be here, I guess.
I guess it's kind of what Tony said was, you know, if your condition of approval is hanging out there and it doesn't look like you're going to be able to meet it, you're going to have to amend your plan or you're not, you're going to be denying subsequent site plans.
If, if, if the commission's comfortable that we will wait for redevelopment of the site to occur to get these improvements, I would recommend dropping, to drop the fifteen, seventeen or twenty year. If you have a concern and you want to revisit it, it, it becomes an issue of, you know, realistically in twenty years, remembering to come back and look at it, honestly. I don't know how to track that.
Well, the benefit of the fifteen years is that you're, you're, you're putting a trigger in there five years before the end time expires.
Right. Well, what's our ability? What's our ability to revisit a master plan?
Well, why not?
Because you're going to have a condition of approval that says you shall build this by X year. And if you're, either it's built and the condition's met or you're amending it. Um, so those are really your, the two options in the end. Or you don't include a drop dead date and you just wait for redevelopment and you, and you address these as either detailed plans come in or a new master plan is, is done at some later date.
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable dropping it, I, I think. I think I'm comfortable with the, the way we run that through with master planning and the way we've done it with the land use. You know, I mean, not tie the hands of a developer that has absolutely no control of their, of their ability to build there at this point with, with leaseholds.
And I just, but, yeah, I, I know that's the tricky part, but that doesn't excuse. I guess, you know, for, for me, this project is, if we're to summarize this project is that the concept behind this is actually internalized, is that we don't want to move the buildings to be outside. We're, we're bringing it in. So bringing it in, we're creating internal streets. And so we're creating this connectivity. And I think it's great, actually, in the east west one, it's going to be intact right away. That's the really important one. It's the ones that go north that just sort of feather out that are problematic. And I don't think the one on the east side is more problematic because, you know, north of this, all the way down Malala is next use. Next use commercial. So we're going to start seeing over a long period of time residential kind of coming down Malala. And so that, that, the, the ability for pedestrians to access the site kind of cannot, that is really critical. But, but it's almost like in phase one, most of this is going to be in place. It's just that, that time out there. So it'll start handling that, what happens as things are kind of coming down Malala. And that connectivity, kind of, you know, it, it needs more context trying to frame how we do this is important. Because I think it does need to be in place before, before that year. Because that is the concept. It's about streets. It's about connectivity. We want to make sure that they're done. So it seems like at the fif, for me anyway, at the sort of, if it's not done at a fifteen year mark, it seems like it needs to be. That's part of it, that's the concept of it, is that it's a, it's a, it's a street and it has connectivity vehicular and, and pedestrian.
But if you have no ability to address that for twenty-five years, how do you, how do you, how do you do it? That's the question. I mean, you, if you, if the theater's still there and doesn't, and, and has a, a lease and they extend their lease by law, they can. What, 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 what can we do? Other than spend an order of amount of money to change around their parking lot? Or as Mr. Griffith recommended, then look at maybe moving that over a little bit. And that's still on the table.
Well, you know, if, if you leave the, the means of compliance with that connectivity up to the developer, uh, and just say that they have to provide the connectivity and not necessarily adjacent to the street, then the fifteen year, uh, trigger makes sense because it doesn't take plenty of time to plan that out. It's not like it's going to jump at the last minute as a surprise. They're going to have fifteen years to figure out how to get that thing to solve. And so I, I don't have a problem with leaving the fifteen year trigger in there because it gives lots of time and they can work that into the lease now, even if that we negotiated to, to make that work.
Okay. So, so I'm hearing that we want to leave that in at fifteen years.
I, I agree with Commissioner Griffith on that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I think. It needs, there needs to be some point where this gets accomplished.
We have closed public hearing. Yeah, yeah. We, we probably have some technical staff there.
No, the applicant did bring up earlier that early, it's one of those pieces could be with seventeen years with, uh, with, uh, movie theater.
Right.
Is something you want to consider seventeen versus fifteen?
Or twenty, yeah. Even at the twenty year mark, that, that, this master plan is, you know, because the most important part of this master plan is the connectivity. So, I mean, we got to get that somehow in place, otherwise it's, it's nothing, you know?
Why don't we say before the expiration of the master?
Yeah, we could do that. Prior to the expiration of twenty years.
Yeah.
So we would have, um, similar language. That's what the applicant proposed, tying it to a detailed development plan and then putting, keeping it to that says for completed.
Prior to the expiration of the master plan.
With the possibility that could be amended it.
Right.
Realistically.
Sure, sure. Yeah. Okay, I like that.
So for six and seven, it sounded like we're going to add a reference to our, our slow motor manual. Our slow motor standards thirteen and twelve. Uh, we're going to move conditions twenty-one, twenty-three and twenty-five. And we're going to leave condition of approval at the end. And so then I guess more discussion on the commission if there's anything in particular.
So I just want to make sure that we got those going. How, maybe we can, we can go over that in different approval when we're done before we make a decision and we'll have a language.
Yeah, we can read that back to you right now.
Okay, okay, let's do that.
So the first part of the revised condition of approval three will be as written. Um, to improve pedestrian vehicular connectivity through the site during the master plan period, the applicant shall construct or extend the proposed north-south and east-west private streets referred to as E W Street running east-west from McDonald's intersection at Malala Avenue and the N S Street running north-south from the Beaver Creek Road signalized intersection to the Warner Millie Road, to Warner Millie Road to achieve the following designer objectives. A, minimize vehicle backing movements into the main drive aisles. B, separate vehicle and pedestrian access. C, provide complete pedestrian connections on both sides of the drive aisles to the extent practicable. And D, provide trees and landscaping that complies with OCMC seventeen point five-two. The improvements required pursuant to this condition shall be triggered for each sphere of influence as labeled on exhibit twenty-eight. When the building in that sphere of influence submits their detailed development plan land use application pursuant to this master plan approval, comma, or, two, when, based on the applicant's conceptual housing plan, all remaining unimproved portions of the north-south and east-west streets shall be installed prior to expiration of the master plan approval.
Okay. Did you, did you have some, you said you, you know, that's, that'll cover it? Okay. Okay, well, now we have a condition of approval three now. And everything else seems to be okay there. So let's talk more. If there's any other issues that you want to bring forward, special?
Uh, I think one thing that we needed to address was the, uh, comments by Mr. Griffith about the, uh, site triangles or vision clearance at the intersections.
I think we got that one.
You got that one right?
On the landscaping plan, it says it's a fifteen foot intersection.
You did, basically you just keep your trees limbed up to eight feet as well. So.
Okay. Would like to start the ball rolling.
Well, I, I think that there's been a lot of, of good, hard work that's gone into this design. Um, it's creative, it's thoughtful. Um, I like the idea of activating, um, these, these spaces for, for the people that could walk there, uh, from the county buildings or from the businesses on, um, on Beaver Creek or Malala. I think that, uh, all of the adjustments are appropriate to, uh, to making basically a, a local, uh, uh, street system, a local pedestrian connectivity system. a local pedestrian connectivity system, um, in, in this development, I, I really liked that. Um, the, the N-Rod, uh, the National Resource Overlay, uh, uh, adjustments make sense as well. Uh, it's, uh, it looks like it's a difficult site, um, to, to, to have to engineer and to design around and, uh, and, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm glad that we've got the, uh, the condition of approval number three hammered out. Uh, but I'm in support of, of approving, uh, this master plan, um, and, uh, the conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, me too, um, you know, for those, for those folks out there that, um, don't realize what a developer needs to know, I think it's about ninety, are we ninety pages in our, our staff report? It's a lot of stuff.
This, this is the short version. You haven't got a hundred and ninety.
Yeah, and so, you know, there, there's a lot that the private sector needs to do on these kinds of projects that, that, you know, that are, that are tough. And, and, um, I, I think it was, it was a really well-conceived idea. Um, again, for me, the connectivity is the idea here, it's taking a very large parking lot essentially right now and really starting to make it, uh, much more active, and so that's just a really important part, and I think we've got our hand, our, our handle on that right now. Um, I wish that our design review, uh, had other aspects to it with regards to just aesthetics, just, you know, what is Oregon City and what should this do? This is an important building and, you know, what should it look like, but this body doesn't really look at that aspect, unfortunately. I wish, I, I wish the city would change that particularly for large and important projects like this, um, but, um, I'm upset about that. Um, otherwise, I'm, I'm in full support of this, it's a great project.
Well, I first went to Oregon City in nineteen seventy-seven, and, uh, the Dandersons' Thriftway at that time was a known super center and, uh, was the only, uh, the only shopping center on, uh, the hilltop, uh, there, there was no other grocery store opportunities. There was a, where the McDonald's restaurant is today, it was the King's Table, and, uh, there was a bowling alley on the corner. And, uh, the, the area that now contains Fred Meyer was a big field and, uh, we've seen a lot of changes in the last thirty years in Oregon City, and, uh, there, there was, uh, there was some sadness for me and, and my family that was saw, uh, the energy taken away from this center uh, during the time when Fred Meyer and Albertson's came in and, and, uh, unfortunately, it, it, it just threw away the energy from the center. And I, I think it's really exciting to, to see this area being re-energized. Uh, the comments made about, uh, Beaver Creek Road, I remember there wasn't a Beaver Creek Road there, it, it's nothing back there. That whole red soils there, it was little red soils. That was it. Uh, and I think, uh, the effort to energize that side of the building is great. Uh, when they first ran Beaver Creek Road to there, uh, that was the first time I'd ever seen the back of the building. And I was really bummed out on the backside of that building. You get a really great view of the loading dock. And, uh, so I, I think, you know, the, uh, the effort that's been made, uh, to energize that side of the building was very admirable. Uh, I, I do think that, uh, the connectivity of the pedestrian link from north to south is an important link. And, uh, I know as a commissioner, you only have so much, uh, that we can say about that really as far as, uh, what triggers that, what implements that happen. Uh, I would personally like to see that happen sooner than later, if that's something that could get moved up into the development process. As an architect, I, I, I see the potential there to do something that would be fairly cost-effective, not require completely redesigning the whole parking lot to make it happen, uh, I think that's a possibility. Uh, I think the, uh, phase one pad for future restaurant is a, a great, uh, gesture toward energizing that frontage on Beaver Creek. I'd like to see that, as well as the, the phase two development or phase three, uh, at the, that corner where the US Main. Because that's a frontage of Beaver Creek Road, really needs some attention as far as something that faces it. My, my opinion, we've done a great job with this plan and I would definitely support.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, I remember sitting through five years of meetings rewriting our code, and one of the discussions was, well, what, you know, when we talked about pedestrian accessibility, what if, what if somebody wants to put a, a grocery store on, on Malala or on, on Beaver Creek? You know, how, how is that gonna look? How are we gonna do it? And, you know, I, I struggled over that, I said, gee, you know, that's gonna be a hell of a, we talked this through and we ended up writing code. You may or may not like it, but we wrote code, you guys did a great job of taking that code and really making it work. Um, I'm really pleased with what I've seen, um, you've, you've met my vision, my concept of when we wrote that code of what we really wanted, and you've done a great job with it. Uh, so I'm really pleased the way that's come out, I, 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 I like the retail, I like the ability to see that retail from both Beaver Creek and Malala, I think it makes perfect sense. Um, I like the connectivity, I love the concept of, of getting more people in there on their feet, and, and I like the pedestrian access you've got, I like the pedestrian amenities you've done, i- i- it's all a wonderful thing for this, for the neighborhood and certainly for, for Oregon City. Um, I was, obviously, you've heard me over and over, I was concerned about the speed from going, uh, across. But with the stop signs, with the raised, uh, uh, pedestrian walkway there, I think that will, time will tell, but I think that's a good, uh, I think that's a good start. And, uh, clearly, uh, it's only in Safeway's best interest to make sure that their pedestrians are friendly and if they're happy, and if something's going on there, I think they'll make that change if they have to. So I leave that to, uh, the tenant to make sure that that's the right thing to do. Um, of, of course, everything else to this that I completely agree with, it's a terrific deal. Uh, I'd like to thank, um, Safeway and the Dandersons for bringing the jobs to Oregon City. Uh, unfortunately, a lot of our commissioners don't believe that retail jobs are worth anything, but I think this body does, and we appreciate very much what you're doing for us, so. Thank you very much, and I support this as well. So, we have a motion.
That we accept the proposed design with the conditions of approval that we had discussed.
Okay, well, let's, okay, so that would be CP ten oh one, EP ten H two, WR ten dash three.
I'll stop you there.
We have a motion, uh, and a second. Tony?
Should start it. Aye, Christian Kibro.
Aye. Aye. Alright, well, thank you very much.
Next.
Thank you, Tom.
Just real, real quick, we did receive a, a note from, uh, Susan Hanson, Community Affairs Coordinator for Oregon Department of Transportation on the Oregon City West Lynn Arch Bridge project update. The bridge closure date's been set for Saturday, January fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, they're expecting the last for twenty-four months. Um, they are having two open houses, one in Oregon City and one in Le- West Lynn in early January. And the website is www dot arch rehab, one word, dot net.
Oh, great. That's a fact, and I'm not looking forward to it, but it'll look nice when it's done. Um, did you wanna go with anything, uh, you wanna do an email on, on the applicant?
Okay, very good, well, uh, then at this point, if there's no other business, you are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.